Meeting the Amherst Township trustees called order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Abraham?
Here.
Lynch?
Here.
Yuri?
Yes.
And Josh?
Okay, thanks, Chris. At this time, we're going to recess from the trustees' regular meeting to go into a public hearing, which I'm sure is why most people are here. This public hearing involves a proposed settlement agreement between the Board of Trustees of Amherst Township and Amherst Consolidated Properties LLC and the Lorraine County Common Plea's Court Case Number 20 CV200199. The settlement pertains to a proposed planned development district preliminarily referenced as Sandstone Development of approximately 264.23 acres situated in Amherst Township, bounded by the Ohio Turnpike to the north, State Route 58 to the west, Oberlin Road to the east, and residential properties fronting State Route 113 to the south. This approximately 264-acre area consists of nine tax parcels owned by Consolidated Investors Group LLC and Consolidated Investors Group II LLC. Approximately 139.51 acres of the western portion of the property near State Route 58 are currently zoned GB1 for general business, and 124.72 acres of the eastern portion of the property are zoned residential agricultural, RAG, which allows for agricultural use or residential homes on one-acre parcels with 125-foot frontage. A portion of the property is currently devoted exclusively to commercial agricultural, allowing tax valuations according to its current use rather than its highest and best potential use. This portion of property is known as the Current Agricultural Use Value Program, resulting in substantially lower tax bills. All parcels are in the Amherst Exempt Village School District. Amherst Consolidated Properties has an option to purchase the parcels from Consolidated Investors Group. Amherst Consolidated Properties requested an area variance from Amherst Township zoning resolutions, 600-acre minimum requirement for a planned development district use, with the intention to request a rezoning of the 264-acre property from its current zoning classification to planned development district. Following a December 5, 2019 Board of Zoning Appeals Public Hearing, the Board of Zoning Appeals denied the variance request. Amherst Consolidated Properties appealed the Board of Zoning Appeals decision with Lorraine County Court of Common Pleas. The Amherst Township Board of Trustees respects the Board of Zoning Appeals' decision and the variance request and is confident that they could defend the township's position in the Court of Common Pleas. The trustees also recognized that defending their position and winning the case could ultimately do greater harm to the whole of Amherst Township, essentially winning the battle but losing the war. Although neither Amherst Consolidated Properties or Consolidated Investors Group has discussed the possibility of annexation with the trustees, the 264-acre property, along with the property of an adjacent property owner, abuts the city of Amherst. If the trustees hold firm in resisting any change in the current zoning classification, it is expected that the property subject to this litigation and a considerable amount of adjoining property would become the subject of an expedited annexation petition to the city of Amherst, so the developer and the property owner could achieve the highest and best potential use of their property. Annexation would significantly weaken the influence of the desires of the Amherst Township residents and the trustees and result in a weakened financial situation for the township. Against this backdrop, the trustees felt compelled to cooperate with Amherst Consolidated Properties and Consolidated Investors Group to resolve the litigation in a fair and reasonable manner, as will benefit the parties mutually, and serve the public health, welfare, safety, and general good of all Amherst Township residents and property owners. Pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 505.07, the Amherst Township Board of Trustees published notice of their intent to meet on February 23, 2021, to consider and take action on a settlement agreement of this litigation in the Chronicle Telegram on February 8, 2021, 15 days before this public hearing. The proposed settlement agreement was posted on the Amherst Township website on February 7, 2021, and copies were placed in the office of the fiscal officer. Notices were also mailed to all adjoining property owners on February 8, 2021. This public hearing shall provide an opportunity for any interested person to be heard. The developer, Amherst Consolidated Properties, shall have 45 minutes to present their case for support of the settlement agreement. 60 minutes has been allotted for public comment. The amount of time allotted for any individual to speak will depend upon the number of individuals that wish to comment. Following the public comment period, 10 minutes has been allotted for possible comment by the trustees. Subsequently, the trustees shall return to the regular meeting to consider and take action on the proposed settlement agreement. So, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to the developers. Mr. Oster?
Good evening. I'm Tom Oster. With us this evening, John Evanson over here. John's my partner in the development. Chris Howard is with Bramhall Engineering. I'm not sure what the legal name is, but Bramhall Engineering. So, we brought him as our insurance policy in case some technical questions come up that we may or may not be able to answer. How do I get the slide presentation? And since we all look casual at night, I'm just going to sit down and go through this. So, the community name is Sandstone. We're proposing a mixed-use development where you can live, shop, and play. First of all, the developers, as Neil mentioned, the developers, Amherst Consolidated Properties LLC. That is owned by myself, Tom Oster, my partner, John Evanson. We are not out-of-town developers coming in, taking your money, and leaving. We live locally. John lives in Avon. I live in Oak Point Estates, which is off Oak Point Road in Lorraine. We pay our taxes locally. We reinvest our money locally, and we've been developing for 30 years, since 1991. We've developed over 4,000 sites throughout northeast Ohio, mostly Lorraine County, but also Lake Portage, Cuyahoga, and Summit Counties as well. Starting from Lake Erie, heading south, we developed Martin's Run and Morningside. That's all the property behind the Walmart and Kohl's in Lorraine. So, it goes from 58 to Mercy Hospital, mostly from Yeager Road north to Meister Road. Just west of that, we're developing Cornerstone Farms. It's a 151-lot subdivision. We're in the final phases there. And we generally develop and have national builders or local builders build the homes. So, Cornerstone Farms, Kay Hobnannian is the builder. They're a public company. Those homes range in the 3 to 350 range. Starting on Oak Point Road from the lake, we developed the majority of Hidden Creek in Lorraine. Those homes are in the 3 to 350 range. Just south of that is the Oaks. Oaks is 160 lots priced in the 225, 230 range. Then, just abutting that is Oak Point Estates, 45 lots on 45 acres. So, they're one-acre lots, mostly in the $400,000 to $500,000 price point. Just south of that, or abutting that, we're in the process of developing Sandy Springs. Ryan Homes would be the builder in there. Those homes would be starting around 300. And then, as you come south of Route 2, we finished up Apple Orchard, the very last phase, and did Orchard Glen, which are about 53 lots behind Apple Orchard. The Woods of Amherst, which is on West Martin in Amherst, 25 homes on 25 acres. Those are mostly in the 350, 450 range. Further down South Lake Street, we did Rivers Edge, which is where the Amherst and Fireland School, just north of Middle Ridge. North Point, we did on 58, which is on the northwest corner of 58 and the Turnpike. That was roughly 200 units in there. What you see here, this is Morningside, our active adult community. These are 24-unit condo buildings that we did up here. And this is a 13,300-square-for clubhouse, full-time lifestyle activities director, indoor pool, outdoor pool, grand ballroom, bocce, gazebo, billiards, you know, all that kind of stuff, fountains. And this, we started in 2006. We were actually presented it at the national level in 2005 to the National Association of Home Builders. We placed in the top three in the country for the best-new active-adult product on the board. This is a letter from Governor Voyn... or, I'm sorry, Senator Voynovich congratulating us on our award and the grand opening in 2006. Sandstone is a community that we're speaking about this evening. It's on the southeast corner of the Ohio Turnpike here, Route 58 here. We have nine contiguous parcels. About 150-plus-or-minus acres are currently farmed. Roughly 115-plus-or-minus acres are wooded. And this line that goes here north and south, this is the boundary of what is GB1, which is General Business District, on the west side, this 139 acres. And the 125 acres on this side is currently zoned residential-agricultural, which obviously is residential. So, currently, again, there's 139 acres zoned GB1. Under the current zoning, under GB1, we're required to have a one-acre lot minimum for general business. Has to be 175 feet wide, and your building has to be 50 feet setback in the front of your lot. On the residential side, on the 125 acres, currently, the minimum lot size is one acre, 125-foot frontage with a 50-foot setback. What we're proposing is a planned development district. The planned development district, per the guidelines of Amherst Township, require 600 acres of land. We have 265. Under the PDD, your planned development district, it allows for mixed land use, so you can have business with residential. And by doing this, what we do is we implement the township economic goals. So, if you look out here, this is the Amherst Township zoning map. So, everything you see in color is currently in Amherst Township. The green is residential. The blue is your general business district. I'm sorry? GB1, general business. I think you can put some industrial. So, here is the Ohio Turnpike right here. This is obviously Hidden Valley up here. So, we're on the Turnpike and 58. And you'll see that Amherst Township has created a business district that runs all the way down the 58 corridor. So, we want to protect that, you know, and stay within what their wishes are. We obviously have more general business district than much of the other frontage on 58. We actually have 139 acres. Under our proposal, we think that's probably too much, so we're actually looking to reduce that by 98 acres and bring it down to 41 acres of business and convert the rest to residential. So, under the PDD, like I said, you can have offices, restaurants, hotels, residential. The reason we came in for a variance on our zoning, which we were denied the variance, is because the township does require 600 acres. We looked at all the other surrounding communities, and for the most part, every other community is five acres up to 50. Avon Lake is 50. Laryia 50. Lorraine 10. North Homestead 35. Homestead Falls and Township, you know, 30 and 10. Westlake 25 acres. The only areas that have excess of 50 acres are Amherst Township and South Amherst. And as I understand, Amherst Township was created at 600, and South Amherst at 140, solely for the quarry project. They wanted to bring that into a planned development district, so they created that zoning district based on the amount of land that they were bringing in. So, it's my belief that there probably wasn't a lot of consideration in, you know, figuring out what realistically would make sense for a planned development district. Regardless, it's 600 acres. We thought, you know, something less than that, based on what everybody else is doing, might work. So, our proposed Sandstone development, this is the old plan here. Off of 58, we've got 41 acres of commercial, and I've got bigger slides. We'll look at stuff in more detail. So, we had 41 acres of commercial here, 139 acres of single-family all through here, and then 30 acres on the north part, which we originally had proposed putting in 600 multifamily units. Obviously, that was a no-no, so our revised plan has eliminated that. And we have about 54 acres of open space and the green space and trails. So, here's our current plan for Sandstone. Again, off of 58, there's a boulevard entryways you come in. We have a roundabout. If you go straight, it goes through the... some more of the commercial area. We call it Town Center. And then, there's a 100-year flood zone right through here. So, we use the 100-year flood zone as the break between the commercial or general business and the residential, and that's how we reduced it down to 41 acres. So, anyway, come in from 58, roundabout, and then there's a... we call it a spline road that runs north and east. It's a little over a mile, and it runs all the way from 58, and it connects over to Oberlin Road. So, we created the spline road for emergency vehicles, basically general traffic flow, but for fire, safety, emergency, they could easily get from one side to the other by crossing the spline road. And there's no houses or anything that will be built on the spline road. We're also proposing to give the township a larger right-of-way than what is typical. Typically, you have a 60-foot right-of-way. We're proposing 80 feet. So, within the 80 feet, we're going to put in an eight-foot-wide asphalt trail that runs all along the spline road through here. And then, as we get down just above the commercial area, and we'll talk about this in a bit, we're proposing donating some land to the Metro Park, so they can put a trailhead in over here. The prior plan had 538 single families, and the prior plan had a road. It had two roads coming out to Oberlin Road, one to the north, and we also had one down here to the south. So, in speaking with the township, a number of concerns that they had and the residents had is the more intersections that you have, the greater chance there is for an accident. So, every time there's an accident in the township, it costs them, you know, upwards of $1,000 to deal with that accident, whether, you know, it's bringing in volunteer firemen or bringing in other, you know, people to deal with the accident. We wanted to limit the amount of ingress-and-egress points, so therefore, we just have one on Oberlin Road and then the one on 58. So, before, we had 20, 25 homes that came out here on this road on the south side. And what our settlement agreement that we negotiated is we would eliminate that secondary ingress-egress point, and we would hold the cul-de-sac back at least 700 feet from Oberlin Road. And the reason for that is... let me go back a previous slide here. Along Oberlin Road, all the homes on the east side of the street, there's 12 houses on the east side of the street. So, these houses here vary anywhere from an acre up to three acres where these 12 houses are. The average is 1.61 acres, and these are about 350 feet deep. On the west, north-southeast west side of the street, the homes north of this entryway are mostly the smaller acre, acre-and-a-half lots. But once you get south of the entryway, these are the big parcels. So, we wanted to protect the existing owners that have the larger parcels to the south, and by us leaving the 700 feet in there, it allowed a transition point for the larger parcels to the south, whereas all the ones to the north and the other side of the street are mostly, you know, smaller acre-and-a-half-plus-or-minus parcels. So, as part of the settlement agreement, what we agreed to is this 700-foot-deep area is to put only three lots. So, we're going to have three lots instead of an entryway coming to Oberlin Road. These lots will be a minimum of 100 feet wide, averaging 700-plus feet in depth. So, they're running about 1.6 to 1.7 acres in land. And again, what we did here is we looked at the 12 homes on this side. Again, those are averaging 1.61 acres, and ironically, the homes on the east side of the road range from 1,704 square feet up to 3,080, with the average on the east side of the street being 2,151 square feet. And then, on the west side of the street, we took all the big parcels and the small parcels. There's 11 homes through here. Those homes average 1,938 square feet. They range as low as 1,279 up to 2,988 square feet. So, if we take the 23 homes collectively on Oberlin Road, they average 2,049 feet, and other than the big parcels to the south, they're averaging just under 1.6 acres between those 23 parcels. So, again, what we did is we created lot sizes that were consistent with all the other lots up and down Oberlin Road, 1.6 to 1.7 acres. The other thing we did as part of the settlement agreement is we are requiring colonials to be a minimum of 2,500 square feet and ranches to be a minimum of 2,000 square feet on the three lots on Oberlin Road to further protect anybody's property value as it relates to the properties up and down Oberlin Road. So, the homes that we would put up there would, on average, be about 22% larger than the average home that is currently up and down Oberlin Road. The other thing we agreed to do as part of the settlement agreement, and again, I got other slides which zoom in a little better. The people on 113 to protect them, because they have larger parcels, although the people on... there's 11 homes of 113 that abut us to the south. Those homes average 1,762 square feet. So, they range from 1,431 up to 3,024, with the average being 1,762 on Route 113. So, what we agreed to do as part of the settlement agreement is to increase all of our lot sizes along the entire south boundary where we abut the 113 properties, and then up through here where we abut Oberlin Road, all these lots through here, all the way around to here. So, these lots are all 40% larger than all the other lots in the subdivision. We are also requiring all these perimeter lots to have homes that are at least 50-foot wide in elevation, 2,300 square feet for colonials, and 1,800 square foot minimums for ranches. So, these homes around the perimeter will likely be in that 350 to 400 range. Most of the homes that are being built today, you really can't build anything for under about 300,000. So, we're projecting about 300,000 on the other lots, 350 to 400 around the perimeter. Also, we're proposing, again, around the perimeter, once you get to the rear of the lot, we're putting a 50-foot buffer all the way around. We're proposing that to be mounded all the way around the perimeter of these lots as well to also further, you know, protect the people that, you know, are about the subdivision. As far as stormwater retention, we're required to maintain so much stormwater on site. As part of the settlement agreement, we have agreed to retain more water on site than what is required for us to maintain or retain. So, we are currently doing a flood study or a stormwater drainage study, you know, on the whole general region, 113 north. So, any, you know, issues that have happened in the past or any sins of the past we're trying to deal with on our site, so any flooding or storm problems that may be south of us, we're going to try to accumulate that and retain that on our property, you know, to further help out any flooding issues that may be a concern. On the north... and then, in these retention ponds, we're going to put landscaping around them. Not all of them, but most of them will have, like, fountains, so we're going to make them look aesthetically pleasing. Try to keep the water circulating, so, you know, there's not mosquitoes and that kind of stuff. On the north side of the spline road, again, we had this 30 acres laid out for 600 multifamily units. So, our settlement agreement says no rental units or no apartments. So, this area can be one of four things. Can be single-family, detached single-family homes. It could be single-family townhomes, and that's what's shown here. This is a townhome layout with about 267 townhomes. It could be single-family condominiums, or it could be age-targeted senior rentals. That would be the only type of rentals that could possibly be in the development is age-targeted seniors. And if that were the case, then we agree that all the streets within that area will be private streets and maintained by the association for that 30-acre section. So, there'll be no burden on the taxpayers or the township. So, your questions might be, why do we need so many houses? And the answer is rooftops bring commercial development. You know, the whole 58 corridor, the county put a brand-new sewer line all the way down 58 19 years ago, and it's really untouched. And the reason is, is commercial development, they don't come unless there's people to support their business. So, rooftops bring commercial activity. I know not everybody wants commercial activity. Martin's Run and Morningside is an example. When we got that approved, that was planned for 2,458 units. We're actually going to be under 1,500 at completion, and we're nearing completion over there. So, even though our plan for Sandstone calls for, you know, 500 single families and, you know, 200 or 300 others in that north area, once we get into engineering and wetlands permitting and stormwater calculations, you know, that number likely will be less than what we're proposing. So, in Lorraine as an example, Walmart, Kohl's, Home Depot, Applebee's, they are only there... or, let me clarify that. The major reason that they came to Lorraine was because of all the rooftops that were coming to the area. Same with Target, Lowe's. Rooftops bring commercial activity. So, I keep an eye on my time here. So, in our development, in the commercial area, the 41 acres, we're based on our conceptual plan, there'll be 403 permanent full-time jobs created, and we'll go through that plan here in a minute. Again, the rooftops bring jobs, shopping, restaurants, so on and so forth. This is the 41-acre commercial center. Again, you come in off of 58. Number one here on the south side, we're showing that as a 12,000-square-foot potential drugstore or convenience-type store. Number 12 is a service gas station, like a Sheetz or something like that. 11, 13, and 18, those are set up for large retail, mostly like national restaurants. 17 up here is a 100-key hotel, and 15 is an 80-key hotel. Number 14, this is shown as a three-story, 65,000-square-foot medical facility, like a Cleveland Clinic or something like that. Number seven is a 22,000-square-foot grocery chain. And then, this area here is our town center. You've got offices on the second floor of these buildings and, you know, just your basic stuff that you get, you know, hair salons, restaurants, spa, fitness center, that kind of stuff. This, again, is a multifamily section on the north side. We had 600 apartments. We've now changed that to single, like we talked about, single-family detached, single-family townhomes and condos or age-targeted senior rentals with private streets. And again, if I'm going too fast, I'm trying to keep an eye on the time. The old single-family had a second egress point here to Oberlin Road. 538 singles, two exits to Oberlin Road. We do have a homeowners' association throughout the entire community, walking trails. The retention ponds will have, you know, trees and fountains in them. Because Amherst is the sandstone capital of the world, we're going to try to, you know, do as much as we can with stone elevations, craftsmen-type elevations. We'll have standardized signing, signage, standardized streetlights, landscaping. For the single families, there'll be a clubhouse and a pool. This is a new one, again, we pretty much hit on this. We got 499 versus 538 singles, remove the south entryway, added the three large lots, 2,500 square foot minimum with 2,000 square foot for ranches, with the large home sites along the south and around the Oberlin Road properties. 50-foot buffer all the way around, mounded. 2,300 square foot colonials, 1,800 ranches. And that's pretty much it. This potential elevation of what the clubhouse might look like with the stone and craftsman look. We'd have standardized mailbox, yeah, mailboxes, fences, streetlights, okay. Lorraine County Metro Parks, we're proposing to donate some property to them. Here's what a typical trailhead looks like. They want to extend their trails from Wellington up to Amherst, Amherst Township, and that's going to come right up to 58 and the Turnpike. So we're proposing to donate some land to them. And again, this is a typical trailhead with parking and restrooms. Up here, this is Morningside at Martin's Run. This just shows what a typical eight-foot-wide trail would look like, you know, paralleling the Spine Street. Just a map of the current, you know, metro parks around. We've got a letter of support from Jim Zemanek, the director of Lorraine County Metro Parks. In case you can't read it or didn't get a chance to look at it in the package from the Metro Parks. Please accept this letter on behalf of Lorraine County Metro Parks in support of your proposal for a 265-acre mixed-use development titled Sandstone in Amherst Township. We are excited about the possibilities of connecting a proposed trail that we are planning along the Lake Shore Railroad that will connect Wellington to Amherst, Amherst Township at State Route 58 and the Ohio Turnpike to your future development. And again, we're going to then add a one-mile asphalt road along the Spine Street. Your proposal to donate land to Lorraine County Metro Park that could be used for a trailhead that would ultimately permit trails to be constructed within your development is certainly of great interest to us and would unquestionably provide multiple benefits to the community. We are excited about the prospects of further developing connectivity and preserving and enhancing green space within that area of Lorraine County that will better serve the recreational health and fitness and commuting needs of the residents, including possibilities of providing safe active transportation routes for children and families. The maps and financial analysis benefits of the project that you provided unequivocally exhibits the high level of planning, detailed due diligence, research, and analysis that you have invested in the project. Such a development would certainly yield numerous assets for the community as well as to all of Lorraine County. Based on the information that you shared, the Lorraine County Metro Parks would welcome the opportunity to collaborate with you on your proposed development. Also, as part of the settlement agreement, the existing parks within the township, there's really not a funding mechanism to, you know, enhance those and take care of those. So what we are proposing or have agreed to in the settlement agreement, the developer proposes the creation of a township park and recreation fund, estimated to generate in excess of an eighth of a million dollars for existing and/or future park expansion in the township. And the way that that works, or the way that that'll be funded, there'll be a $250 contribution with the issuance of each building permit or zoning certificate, I guess you call it, the township. So whenever they issue a zoning certificate to build a house, there's a $250 fee that'll go into the township park and recreation fund. So on 500 homes, 250 bucks, that's $125,000. We're also proposing $100 per unit on everything in the 30-acre section. So if there's 300 units built in there, that's another $30,000. So potentially 125 to 150 to $175,000 fund will be created for the parks within the township. And also, we are big supporters of Lorraine County Metro Parks. For those of you that may have been around a long time, we own the old 30-acre Michael Locas Park, which was off of Jaeger Road. I donated that to Lorraine County Metro Parks last year, so they're going to start, you know, working on that. We have a development off Oak Point Road. We're going to donate 20 acres to this year. That way, they can connect their pony trail from the lake, which runs south behind all the subdivisions and, yeah, so they can enhance their parks there. This is a letter from the commissioner, Lorraine County Commissioners. Lorraine County Board of Commissioners supports the proposed land use settlement that would allow for the development of 265 acres located on the south of Ohio Turnpike and State Route 58 as a planned unit development. The proposed 41 acres of commercial development takes advantage of massive public infrastructure or massive, I'm sorry, massive public investment made by the state of Ohio with the Turnpike interchange and improvements to State Route 58 over the years, making it very accessible to the surrounding area. Providing for 400-plus new jobs to the community would make this one of the larger economic development projects in the county. In light of the recent COVID-19 pandemic and its effects on unemployment, not unemployment, but employment, the job creation this project would bring to Lorraine County is essential in making up for some of the loss of income to local jurisdictions. The development will also utilize the county sewer that was installed about 18 years ago that has more than sufficient capacity to serve the project's commercial and residential sewage needs. The sewer was put in with public money, and this development will allow the public to see a return on its initial investment. Overall, the fees and user rates this project would generate enables the county system and the city of Lorraine's wastewater treatment plant to expand its customer base and secure revenues to maintain and continually improve the system designed to protect our environment. This project will significantly increase private investment that will generate real estate, real property collections, sales tax revenues, income tax collections if placed into a joint economic development district, and utility customers supporting our public utilities. The taxes estimated to be generated by Envision Group LLC, which is a company we hired out of Cleveland to do all the market stuff and figure out the benefits for all the local municipalities, are seen to be consistent, if not a tad conservative, with the build-out of approximately 40 million in commercial real property valuation, nearly 170 million in residential real property valuation. The added real estate taxes will be beneficial to the school systems impacted by loss of state revenues impacted by the pandemic. The proposed hotel will also generate additional lodging taxes and providing for the first hotel to be built in the western portion of the county along the Turnpike. This area of the county with its existing infrastructure in place should be allowed to be developed in a manner similar to what exists for the former Amherst Quarry by allowing for mixed uses and varying density. Existing infrastructure is being utilized at a more efficient level. The developers also indicated working to interconnect the development with a proposed bike trail leverages additional benefits to the community. Jim Cordez, county administrator. Just to get to some, a few mechanicals here. The Spine Road that we're proposing, running from 58 to Oberlin Road, again, that's east-west connectivity. It'll benefit fire, police, and emergency vehicles, also just general traffic flow. We are proposing, at the township's request, putting speed-reducing hubs down the road to slow down the traffic. Nobody wants people driving 50 miles an hour through there. So this is an example of Oak Point Estates. You drive down the street, and there's like a hub in the middle. So you have to slow down, go around it, and you continue going down the street. So we're proposing some kind of hubs to slow the flow of traffic. There'll be no homes on the Spine Street, and we'll give a larger right-of-way than what is required, you know, for walking trails and public open spaces. Also, a traffic impact study was done, and backtrack here. So a traffic impact study here at 58, obviously, a light is going to be required at 58. There's currently two northbound lanes and two southbound lanes. It will require a turning lane heading southbound. That would be a 565-foot turning lane. Chris, the engineer, has detailed photos of what that turning lane would look like, what is required. So southbound on 58 would require a turning lane. Coming into the subdivision, we have one lane coming in. And then with the roundabout, as you go back out, we had to add a bunch of stacking lanes here and increase the amount going out. So there's actually three lanes coming out of the development. Two of them would be southbound lanes, one would be a northbound lane. Here on Oberlin Road, no traffic signalization is required. What is required is a 345-foot northbound turning lane. So as you come up Oberlin Road, you have, you know, a north and southbound lane and a separate turning lane turning into the subdivision. By 2,041, and I don't know how they got that date, it's 20 years from now. Once the development is built out, they said that there's going to be a need for some modifications at State Route 58 and 113, 20 years from now. And basically, what that is, is a stacking lane coming westbound on 113 before you hit 58. So that would require a 520-foot third lane or a turning lane on State Route 113. At that time, when that happens, there'll have to be modifications to the signalization because you have the right-hand turn from 113 to 58, and then you have the right-hand turn coming down 58 to 113. So the traffic controls will have to be modified to handle that. This here, we engage a company called Envision out of Cleveland. Again, they do all the analysis, and, you know, we think it's ultra-conservative, and the county thinks it's conservative, but we'd rather be conservative. So what they do is they take, we'll just do a quick round math. If you have 500 single families and the average house is 300,000, that's $150 million of real estate value just on the single families. The commercial area is projected to generate about $50 million, and then about another 30 million of real estate value will come from the 30 acres to the north. So in total, it's about a $250 million project. The numbers that we had done were done a year and a half ago. At that time, their calculations were 208 million. So I'd rather base it on the 208 million, which is a conservative number. And what they do is they take each individual building in the commercial area. So let's say, as an example, it's a pharmacy. So a pharmacy, they've got a book, and they look at all the local and national and Cleveland averages of what the auditors appraise a pharmacy for. And it's $128 a square foot. So they take the 12,500 feet times 128 bucks, and that's how they determine what the value is of the pharmacy. And they go all the way through, everything is proposed. And most of them are like $99 and $106 a foot, even though it costs closer to $200 a foot to build these days. That's how they valued everything. So by doing that, it generates from the commercial area and real estate taxes $760,000. And the detail is in the settlement agreement, which I think was posted here at the township or online. The 30 acres to the north will generate about 600,000 real estate taxes, and a single family about 2.5 million. So in total, about $4 million of real estate taxes will be generated from the development. In addition to that, they look at all the commercial stuff again. So I'm just using the pharmacy as an example. The average pharmacy produces $544 per square foot in revenue per year. So then that's how they based what the revenue would be, and the revenue is taxable for sales tax. So in the commercial area, when they roll all that up, there's about $40 million of sales coming out of the commercial area. State of Ohio gets their 5 and 3/4%. Lorraine County gets 1% of that. So the county would get about $390,000 of income tax from the commercial area. The total sales tax collected is about 2.6 million. And then income taxes, Amherst Township does not have an income tax. So as part of our settlement agreement, we're going to cooperate with the township to do what's called a joint economic development district. And that's where they partner with an adjoining city. It doesn't have to be adjoining, but whether it's Amherst or South Amherst or Liria or Lorraine, they would basically bring all of the income from the commercial area into a JED, and then they would share that with the participant. So if they do a JED with Amherst, the So on the 403 employees, we're projecting $18 million of W-2 wages. They get a couple million dollars of business profit, so it's going to generate $20 million a year of taxable income. So let's go back to the top here. So on the right-hand side, the school district would receive 2.4 million from the real estate taxes on the residential side, about 570 on the commercial side. So almost $3 million is what the schools would get from the real estate taxes. The county gets their money. The schools get 75% of the taxes. The county only gets 18.47% of the real estate taxes. So the county's take is 590 plus 140, so about 3/4 million of real estate taxes. They'll get the 1% sales tax, which is 390,000, and then they get what's called the lodging tax from the hotels. So the county gets about $1,250,000 of revenue. And the township, they only get 6.45% of the real estate taxes. It's almost like, it's like they're stealing from the county, but that's what the, that's the way, or the township, but that's the way it works. So the township would get $260,000 a year from the real estate taxes. Again, that's based on a $208 million real estate valuation. We think it's going to be north of 250 million, so we think these numbers are understated by at least 20%. So we talked about a JED. A JED is, like I said, is a joint economic development district. Simply put, the township doesn't have an income tax, so you partner up with somebody else to create an income tax solely for the commercial area, and you split it, and there's benefits for, you know, both the township and the other municipality. So the benefits of a JED, the JED allows the township to preserve its geographical integrity as a political subdivision while continuing to receive all the real estate taxes from the property. Also, the township and the city would share the JED income tax revenue, which gives the township access to a new source of revenue. This share of income tax revenue allows the township to continue to provide local services without constantly having to go back to the residents and ask for real estate tax increases. So the four cities they could do a JED with are over here on the left. City of Amherst, their tax rate is 1.5%. So on that $20 million of payroll and profit from the commercial area, that would generate $309,000 of income taxes. So half of that would come to the township, which is 154,800. They could choose to do it with Lorraine, as an example, who has a higher tax rate of 2.5%, which would then give them 258,000. That's up to them. There's obviously pros and cons of who they might want to do a JED with. Bottom line is, we're fully going to cooperate with them. We think it's a great idea to bring more money into the community. Also, a couple of things I didn't mention in the slide presentation. There is nothing that we are doing in this community that is going to have a burden on anybody in the township. So we are paying for our infrastructure. We are not asking for any participation from the township. We, we are not asking for any participation from the township or anybody within the township. And the other thing I missed was the entryway on Oberlin Road. There's some concerns about lighting. So we will do whatever we can to landscape that and screen that and try to keep that as, as, you know, friendly as, as we can. Just a couple of questions that people may have. Because of this development, will my taxes go up? And the answer to that is simple. If your property value goes up or down in value, yes, your taxes will go up or down accordingly. But other than that, there's no, the consideration for this project will not require any taxation or, or participation from the current residents. So it'll, so this development will have no impact on you unless, of course, your property values go up because of what we're doing here. How will this development impact me as it relates to real estate taxes or taxes that I pay towards levies for the school or for the county? Let me just keep that simple. The way that those levies work, let's say there's a five million dollar LCC college levy. They take the five million dollars and they divide it by all the real estate in the county. And you pay your, your pro rata share based on what your house is worth over all the value in the county. So by us creating more real estate value, that five mil levy still stays the same, but now you've got more real estate to spread that over. So what happens then is your amount that you have to pay for that levy actually goes down. So your taxes will actually go down as it relates to levies when we add more real estate. How will the impact, this development, what will the impacts be on fire and police? Fire and first responder services are provided by the Amherst Fire Department. Both Amherst Township, Amherst and South Amherst are part of an ambulance district contracted through Life Care. These same services will be expanded to meet the needs of Sandstone. There's currently a Lorraine County Sheriff's substation located here. All those stations not permanently staffed. It does allow for officers to be present in the township. So the question of additional police presence will be discussed by community leadership as in any other communities. If the need arises, then there are processes in place to add additional police, police presence. Is there adequate infrastructure, sewers, water, et cetera? Yes, the city put the main infrastructure down fifty-eight. There's sewers that go down Oberlin Road. There's ample water supply around. This is a letter from Ken Carney, the county engineer, stating that there's adequate infrastructure. How will this impact the Amherst School District? The development will be constructed over about a decade. So each year's impacts will be nominal as far as the school district is concerned. Again, this will generate about three million dollars a year for the school district. No students will be going to the school district out of the forty-one acre commercial area. The thirty acres to the north, if that's developed as senior housing, nobody will be going to the school district. So that's like free money to the district without having to educate people. Currently in Amherst, the class sizes are twenty to twenty-five people. And as additional students are added to the district, teachers will be brought on, you know, accordingly. Amherst enrollment has been declining for the last fifteen years. Two thousand six, seven school year, they were at forty-three hundred and forty-five students. So they're, they're graduating classes near four hundred students. That has been declining and declining and declining. Even though new developments keep popping up, enrollment is... I'm sorry? Enrollment's still been declining. They're down to thirty-six hundred and thirty-four students now. So if you look at kindergarten through about eighth grade, you know, where it used to be three seventy-five plus or minus students, they're down to two fifty, two twenty-five, two seventy-five. The only place that's really over two seventy-five is the high school. That's because they have open enrollment for the high school. So the point is, they, um, yeah, have adequate capacity. How will this development impact the Amherst School District financially? Amherst is ranked in the state of Ohio in the top twenty percent academically. So they are doing an exceptional job. They are also ranked in the bottom twenty percent or the lower twenty percent on what they're spending per student to educate them. So that's phenomenal. They're spending at the lower end per student, but yet they have the, the higher end on the education. The CUP report is from the Ohio Department of Education. It's a district report card. For two thousand and twenty, Amherst is spending ten thousand one hundred dollars and a couple pennies per student in education. The average in the state is twelve thousand six hundred and ninety-two. Again, they're doing a great job with, with their financial performance. That was Steve Sayer a little while ago. He said the district is stable for, you know, foreseeable future. Many of the district's costs are fixed. They, they own the buildings, they, you know, they're paying the real estate taxes, utilities, whatever. So the additional students don't necessarily add a lot of additional costs. The three million dollars a year in real estate taxes that will be generated from this community, once this is built out, is an eight, is eighteen percent more than they're currently collecting. So in the entire Amherst School District, they only collect sixteen and a half million from real estate taxes. This will give them another three million dollars. So we're not adding eighteen percent more students. It might be three, three percent more students, but they're going to receive a substantial long-term benefit from the real estate taxes. Short term, and I didn't bring this up, the Collector Street or Spine Road that goes from fifty-eight to Oberlin Road, we're going to propose doing what's called a ten seventy-five residential TIF. And that's where a portion of the real estate taxes are redirected to pay for that road because that's a, a benefit for the county as well. And we have nothing that's going to be on that road. So that's about a four to five million dollar road. I think you had it as low as three, but I'm going to use five. The taxes created out of this development over that ten-year period, you know, are going to be thirty to forty million dollars. So the cost of that road will come out of there, but it's such a small portion compared to the, the overall value. Other than that, I've taken my time. John or Chris, anything you want to add?
All right, thanks, Tom. At this time, we're going to open it up for public comment. And just so that everyone understands here, there's also people watching this at home who will also be able to speak and, and address the questions. But we're going to first address the people here in the hallway. So if I can see a show of hand, if there's anyone that wishes to comment on anything on this development, please raise your hand. Okay, so there's two. Okay, so we've got five inside here. And again, how many are online that raised their hand? How many online raised their hand? Okay, so that gives us six. So that's plenty of time. I don't think each of you will take ten minutes. But with that, I don't think there's any need to have a timer unless somebody really gets carried away here. And just so you're aware, as you're talking, if there's anything, you can, you know, ask the questions here, the developer. We should have time to go back and forth. If it gets contested, though, realize we'll have to rein that in and you'll have to direct your question here to the trustees directly so we can have them call on it. We also have Lorraine County Prosecutor's Office here. And Dan Petticourt and Tom Mangon sit in the back if anything gets into a, a legal-type question. So with that, we're going to start and we'll start up here, what's close to the trustees, and just snake back. So let's see those hands again. Okay, so we're going to start over here then with Dewey, if you want to go first? Yeah, up at the microphone. Yeah, because just so you're aware too, this is being taped. So if you've missed anything, I know we're kind of going through fast. There's a lot of information. You'll be able to see this again on the, on the township website. It'll be there for a short time, then it'll go to the township's YouTube, but you'll be able to find it. Okay?
A couple of things.
Oh, Jeff, I didn't realize that was you there. I thought this was Dewey. So sorry, it's those masks.
Yeah, on this, you were talking about putting in... Pardon me? Jeff Pilars, P.I.L.A.R.S.H., seven eight eight four Oberlin Road. The way you guys did this up with you eliminating the other road and you put in this buffer and you're putting mounds around it, and that's great for everybody except that one poor guy that's living on that one acre where that road's going in. And I'm kind of one, I mean, I have lots of questions, but I'll just, what are you going to do for that guy with your traffic study? Do they estimate, once this is fully developed, how many cars will be going in and out? Because right now, I live on a blank curve. It's already hard enough to get in my driveway. And if you're going to increase the traffic, five hundred, seven hundred, thousand people a day at max or whatever it is, one, I won't be able to get out of my driveway. Two, I got headlights coming in and out, in and out. And I understand it's minimal, it's one poor little guy. The bigger issue is, I live where I live. Most of us do. We bought houses in Amherst Township because we knew full, full well, this should be and could be developed one day, and that's fine, just like they're doing down the road. They're all putting in one acre lots. What you guys are doing, coming, I know the county, it's for this, most of us really don't give a shit. We live out here because we want to live out here. Our zoning board denies you. Our trustees fold. Every lawyer we talked to said you win this hands down, and there's a threat of annexation. Amherst, if you want to annex it, take it. They've already destroyed the township. And if this all goes through, by the way, I want to put four houses on my one acre lot. And I just don't understand how you can, the changes and stuff are made. And I understand I'm the one lone guy out in the thing, you know, for me, it sucks. But I don't know how you, it looks great on paper and you can do your traffic says and all that, but I'm a realist as, as it is right now. I've, I've lived here for twenty years. If you add five hundred cars just to our road, they just went through hell all these years ago at the end of this road with Middle Ridge, getting that finally straightened out where you don't have accidents and stuff all the time, and now boom, you're going to increase the traffic. And you, and I'll, I'll go further than that with the sewers. They said the sewers can handle it and all that. Now, is every house, everything that's going to be developed on that entire site, is all of that going over to Route fifty-eight to this sewer system?
No, it'll, it'll be broke somewhere in the middle. That's part of the engineering, and I don't know if Chris wants to...
And is that in the settlement and the agreement and the writing that if this comes over, because we have the infamous sewer to nowhere on the other side of the street from me, it's a fourteen-inch line, I believe, when it reaches capacity?
Fifteen, I believe, yeah.
If and when it reaches capacity and they have to put a sewer line down there, who's going to pick up the tab? Am I going to have to pay frontage? Because we've already spent, I spent ten thousand dollars on my poop pipe that the Health Department forces to do for under the road and all that other lot. So after all this starts going through and they decide to get bigger, who picks up the tab for that? Is that in part of this development thing when, if and when they have to do that? And you still have to have your water studies done. So basically, your plans could change rather dramatically if that comes back negative toward what you want to do. Am I correct in saying that? Because right now, I can go around this map and show you how almost all that water flows on all that property. I've been running it for twenty years. And the only reason right now that I'm not getting flooded out is a few years ago, they finally put in a, a retention pond and a ditch. And they did that for two reasons. One is it was so wet back there, they had to get it to drain somehow because they were going to have issues developing it. And two, I think they're afraid of finally getting sued because I've done all I could do with a shovel and bringing in loads of dirt, dumping it. It wasn't even my property. I called Mr. Luke, God rest his soul, and asked if I could do it. Your water issues, especially where I live, not so much down the road for everybody else where they have mounds and everything set back. About half that property, over a third of it, all flows over to my house. And this is the first time I've been dry these last, since they put in this ditch, since I've lived there. And the impact that's going to have on my property, how I'll drain it, where it's going to come from, on top of that, that road's going to be there and always, I, I just, I don't know how you're going to contain all that water. And is there any necessary steps that you have to do or you're willing to do to block some of that multiple cars? I, I'm the guy. All the headlights are going in my house. There's a turning lane, you said they have to have one for the northbound, but not for the south?
Correct.
The northbound. I'm not just saying it because I don't want you guys to develop, you're going to have, we're going to have issues with the traffic and accidents and stuff. It's bad. Unless they change the mileage, the speed limit on the road. It's fifty-five, it's a county road. And it's horrific already as it is. And I don't know, is there any way you can reassure us that some of these issues, as far as the water and all that stuff goes? But like, the sewer alone, it worries me. I would like to see something in writing from somebody that none of us are going to be responsible for because we've already had to pick up the tab for the county's mistakes from years past. And we're still paying for it, actually. It kind of sucks. But with this road study, do you have an estimated on, on a number of cars, the traffic, or do they not give you an actual number?
Chris? I mean, I mean, I'm in the ballpark. I mean, I, I don't, I don't want to overshoot it. I don't want to, but I'm just saying, you figure that number of houses, car and a half a day per house for dwelling or whatever you want to call it, it starts to add up. And do you really want to be on the fifty-eight side where you've got all the businesses and all that stuff? No, you're going to want to avoid it. Everybody's going to sneak down Oberlin Road, cut over all right in front of my house and behind my house. And so I'm surrounded by a road on one side and giant retention ponds on front and back, which I still think you're going to have a lot of issues with the water. And I'm just curious how, if and when this goes through, how is that going to be addressed? I mean, what, is there a plan for that? I don't know how this works. I never, I never seen anything get developed like this. Again, all we ever had to worry about was how they might put in one acre lots. There might be seventy houses back there by the time you put a road and everything else in, but now it's going to be seven hundred. And is this precedent? So like, I'm, I'm not joking. Can I go put four houses on my lot? I mean, I, I'm not rich. I don't have lots of money. I can't throw my weight around and go down to the county. I don't know who to talk to and all that and threaten to use a simple variance like I'd get because I want my fence to be six inches higher than what the zoning board says I'm allowed to have. I mean, hell, I, I'll put in a nuclear reactor in my backyard, I'll shoot for the moon. You say no, and then I could put maybe a coal-fired plant in the backyard because, you know, we met somewhere in the middle. That's the way I and a lot of people who don't want to stand up here and speak feel. And it's, it's very, very disheartening. I know you guys are business, got to make money, you got to do what you got to do. But the little guys like us, we're getting screwed. It's destroying our lives, our story. I thank God, I have five kids. I thank God, most of them are grown up and moved out and older now. They got to live the life. But me, on disability, that sweet life is gone. I moved away from the city. We aren't Amherst, I mean, we aren't Avon, we aren't North Olmsted, we aren't Westlake. The reason we aren't is because we don't want to be. That's why they had the zoning they had. That's why the zoning board shot it down. But I don't have the deep pockets like you guys do to go and fight this personally and go to the courts and all that other stuff. So once again, the little guy takes it up the ass. And I, I, I just think this whole thing is wrong. I understand you guys all see dollars, signs and tax dollars and all that. Life ain't always about money. And I'll just say it openly, a couple of you guys up there let us down. Honestly, I think you guys should resign. I think you should have fought this harder. I, I don't give a damn if they annex us either way. You're just worried about the dollar amount. You've destroyed the township. You've destroyed it. This is just the beginning. It's over. You might as well be the city of Amherst now because the township living, the rules you had on the books, all that's gone. It's, it's just, it's just out the window now. And some of us are getting a little too old to pack up and move away and start over somewhere else. We kind of liked it where we were. I'll leave it there. So can I answer?
Yeah, because I wasn't sure which question Jeff wanted answered. He asked quite a few. At first, I was going to tell him how to go about a zoning amendment when he asked about the four homes, but once he got into nuclear reactors and whatnot, I realized he was just being facetious and really didn't want an answer. And then now that, the personal attack, I think, is unwarranted because Jeff, you were one of the interveners. And with your attorney, I can assure you, we took every one of the nine points that you guys had sent us through your, your attorney, many of them we had already addressed. Some of them we couldn't address yet. We also took all the comments and we reviewed the tape that was done of the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting. And we took every commenter that went up there that gave a reasonable request on what we could include. But at the same time, to say that we should ignore the fact of annexation is also, there's no way you can ignore that. You know, that we just had to be pragmatic in what we did, and that's what we did. So I just want you to know that if you want to speak frankly, we will speak frankly. I won't use the same harsh language that you use, but we will speak frankly and openly. Now, Tom, if you want to address the other questions that he had.
Sure. And Jeff, I appreciate, I appreciate your comments. You know, we did look at your, we did look at your property and we actually said, okay, if we put a one acre lot right beside you, you know, we could actually have a house that's about, I think it's twenty or fifty, twenty, twenty feet or so away from your property. So we were conscientious at that point. The nearest home from your property is about four hundred feet away, which would be as if we had like three or four, three or four lots away. Your property, obviously, is a little deeper on the north side, a little less deep on the south side, but I think on average, it's just under two hundred and fifty foot in depth. We looked at all the homes up and down Oberlin Road, and a lot of them are upwards of three We looked at all the homes up and down Oberlin Road, uh, and a lot of them are upwards of three hundred and sixty feet deep. So we pushed everything three hundred and sixty feet back so we could stay behind everybody's property. So we did kind of take that into consideration. Uh, you have a fifteen hundred square foot house, you know, we set bigger square footages and bigger, you know, restrictions, um, on the homes that we're going to build. As part of the settlement agreement, we did, we did agree, uh, to add screening to the entryway at Oberlin Road uh, to mitigate any adverse impacts that headlights would have on your property and, and, and abutting property. As far as the sewers, uh, I mean, they were designed to handle all this development. Uh, and, and exclu- excuse the, the word here, but shit has to flow downhill. So what, what happens is we have to, the, roughly the center of the site would be the high point, and then the sewers have to flow downhill. So we have to flow half of it to fifty-eight, maybe it's two thirds of fifty-eight, you know, and half of it to Oberlin Road. You know, until we get into the design, we won't, we won't know what that is. But the majority of the infrastructure, uh, the majority of it is on the fifty-eight side as far as the commercial and even the single family homes. So I would just speculate to say that probably more sewer would likely go that way than your way. Yeah, I think, I think that's about it. Chris, is there anything you want to add engineering wise or?
With the stormwater management, stormwater management has to be approved by the county. Well, that's good enough. The water release site, a little state of the park. What's a lot about the water?
Uh, and, and the only thing I can say of the four thousand sites that we developed, uh, we have not had any flooding basement, basement issues, any stormwater issues, uh, development generally based on the EPA requirements and stormwater calculations, we have to, like, like, uh, how, um, yeah, we have to retain this water on site and release it over a much slower period. So it can't release the site at a faster pace than it does pre-development. Uh, we have to release it slower.
My biggest concern is, I understand everything and everything, uh, as you said, it has to go downhill. I'm, I'm the guy downhill, I have that for all these years, I've got hundreds and hundreds and thousands of hours with this shell directing water over the years, right? It's bad, and that's why my theory is, is why my theory is no matter how well the site, we start putting that many more roads, that many more roads, I already see the water issues we have. Like, I'm over tomorrow, I'm walking back there in the snow and I just, uh, how it flows, where it comes from. Like, just south of me, even with my house, that's all over, they can't make it to the ditch. I tried two years getting the county to look at this. But I, 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 I've been fighting it for twenty years, that ditch was the best thing that ever happened to me, same for you, because now you guys can go out probably dry it up. That's, that's a huge harm for me personally, because I'm the guy who's on that hill.
Okay, and if we can go, Jim, were you next? Because there's another person online that's raised their hand. And Jim, we know you, but just state your name and where you live.
Hi, um, I'm Jim Conready, seven eight eight twenty-eight Oberlin Road. I am the long area on the north side of your development. Where the lake is and the swamp, and then there's another, a smaller lake or pond. And, uh, that area actually was considered to be according to uh, the turnpike and work that they had done over there. They took some of my land for that, uh, east brown, eastbound, uh, ramp. I'll let this go by. And, um, it's actually considered a protected wetland over there. And I don't know where your basins and stuff are and whether there's any kind of shielding my property from that property. Or whether there's any kind of mitigation and everything kind of heads south, I'm not sure how it goes. So that might be something to look at. One thing that I noticed though in your drawings is the concept of green space doesn't seem to be there any longer. And I was just curious as to where these green places are supposed to be when it looks like nothing but pavement, nothing but roads and roofs and driveways. And that is quite concerning to us. Especially when we've had water problems in the past. So, kind of concerned about that. I don't know too what is the distance between my property line, of which there's about ten acres that makes contact with your property. I don't know what the setback is on that area between the fencing or any kind of a, uh, buffer zone. And that would be something that would be of great interest. Because I'm afraid if you put up a ten foot fence at the back of each person's property, that's nice for them. But if you're putting up an eight foot fence that separates your property with a multifamily region or development, that part of it, whether there's going to be a problem with a bunch of people coming over the fence and getting into my lake, which is approximately eight acres. And it's an area that you can actually jet ski on, it's that big. Okay? From the front of my property to the lake is more than a quarter of a mile walk. Okay? So can I actually see what's going out at the lake? No, I can't. How do we keep people from coming over? All of a sudden, that's not your problem, that's my problem. So, yeah, it, it does impact my property and, you know, what I'm going to be doing on it. So, um, if you have any leftover cash and want to buy the area, well, we'll talk. Okay? So we can keep that in mind. Other than that, I'm kind of perplexed as to why there is no, there's no actual, um, light on Oberlin Road versus something, a light that's actually on fifty-eight, that makes no sense. The speed limit on Oberlin Road, if you check it out, you know what it is?
I just heard it was fifty.
It's fifty-five. Okay? That's five miles an hour more than Route fifty-eight. I checked it out because I was worried when I moved in that we were really going pretty fast down that road. And I said, is this real? And I said, well, you're going to have to wait for another study, you know, in order for that to be worked out, so. Anyway. I think that's about all I had. Right off the bat, the only other thing I was wondering about is school buses. Because if you get a lot of school buses in those winding roads in the back there, and then you get all the buses that are going up and down Oberlin Road, that's going to be a real interesting morning drive. It's interesting enough as it is in the morning.
I don't have access to the internet.
Not so much in the afternoon, but morning is something. I mean, you can have a line of ten, fifteen cars behind a school bus on Oberlin Road. Going either north or south, so, something to consider. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jim, we were trying to get the slide up that would show your property, but for some reason we lost that internet connection. But there's something specifically that you wanted to address in Jim's comments? Yes, no?
John, you want, you're the one who addresses comments?
Uh, I'll talk about this, the speed. Um, after you have development, you can approach ODOT about reducing the speed. Obviously, it's based on the volume of access points and, uh, volume of traffic. So that's something that could be investigated. Um, obviously, ODOT controls the speed limits. So that's something that would just have to be submitted to them further down the road. See if it can be reduced.
There was a study about ten years ago, and it didn't, didn't change anything.
This, this probably would help that, um, based on volume of traffic that's generated. But without that, I, I can't guarantee that it would reduce it. It probably would reduce it less, but I can't guarantee it.
Yeah, and I know we did, we have spoken about our, on our preliminary plans, we have indicated some sort of fencing between the two properties. From your comments, I'm not sure you're saying ten feet or eight feet, but I think the intent is to propose, uh, a fence to separate the properties.
Oh, is it just the old, the old that I had?
Oh, uh, well, I'm not saying, I'm saying that there's, I'm certain that there's regulations of how high they can be in the township. I don't know what those are, but what we would want to do is maximize the height that, that we can get and give some sort of separation.
And I wonder too whether there would be actually a buffer for traffic noise from the turnpike too, that's another concern that you made out of.
Well, and I, I think what I, what I wanted to touch on with you is, we'd, we'd love to talk to you a little bit, I mean, there, we're working through our stormwater designs now. Uh, there may be a possibility to, to bring some of your property into the project to help facilitate that. And of course, that would be a purchase type of proposition, so we'd be happy to talk to you about that.
Okay, who's next? Okay, Colin, and if you'll just state your name and where you live. And this time I've just been instructed, Colin, when you're done to stay up there, don't sit down, because once you're out here, it doesn't pick up on the sound system for the taping.
All right, uh, Colin Cerny, eight zero two three Oberlin Road. I had a question for the engineer about, uh, soil testing they've done. Being that we are the sandstone capital of the world, we have pretty shallow, uh, bedrock. Uh, how has that been taken into account for your retention ponds? Because you're not going to be able to go very deep to hold all this water.
Uh, we actually have done, uh, both boring samples and we also have done field testing samples out there. So we're aware of some of the shallow areas where there is sandstone that comes up to around two or three feet below grade. And there's areas, of course, that go down to twenty feet, so, uh, depending on those tests, are ponds being proposed to accommodate that?
Has, uh, the layout been updated yet to those recent tests?
The layout is based on the borings that we had done, uh, but based on historical data, what we believe the soils look like. Excuse me, almost ran out of breath there as I was spitting that out. But at the end of the day, uh, Bramhaugh Engineering will take that into account. If it's, uh, sandstone or real sandy material, we're not going to hold water in those ponds anyway, so that all is taken into account when you find a line sharing.
Okay, and the same with, uh, the sanitary sewers, that's going to limit how deep you can go. Uh, second effect, which, you're going to Oberlin Road or to, uh, fifty-eight?
Well, I mean, we'll, sanitary is a little different, it's a hard play, we'll rip through anything if we have to, so, I mean, even though it's sandstone, uh, we can puncture through those layers to make that work. But your, your pond, uh, comment is, is absolutely a concern.
And then, uh, helping out with Jeff here, there's, uh, quite a bit of drainage tile that's, uh, out in this project area. What are you guys going to do about that?
Well, I think a lot of times, I mean, and with, this isn't, uh, certainly this isn't something that, that we don't see, or it is something we see quite often. When you enter into an area that's been farmed extensively, there generally is some sort of drainage tile system. A lot of times we'll pick up that tile and direct it to the ponds. Some of that, that piping gets capped and removed or left in place, but that's generally related to the project itself. It, it doesn't have the, the impact offsite that I, I think your concern would be. It's definitely something that we'd have to account for, for sure.
All right, and then, uh, just a comment for the trustees, uh, I feel that this project is putting the township on a population density growth rate that is not sustainable for a township. But this is leading to eventually us becoming a city. Uh, with that being said, everybody in this township will eventually have to pay some city taxes. So if you're looking at how this negatively, negatively affects the township, we're all looking at losing one to two percent of our incomes. So that's all I had to say, thank you.
Hey Jeff, if you could just stay up there, I don't think you'll have to speak, but as far as the population growth, I don't think townships, trustees have no intention of becoming a city. Um, there are townships in Ohio with over fifty thousand residents in them today. And they actually call themselves clout because when we go to the, um, conferences in the wintertime, which obviously didn't happen with coronavirus this year, they actually get some of their own separate sessions that they'll go to because obviously the training and educational sessions that they deal with are completely different than townships of our size or some of the more rural townships, as you get in the central and southern Ohio that only have a few hundred people. Okay? So there's no intention of becoming a city with the Joint Economic Development District that would only impact the businesses and people that work there, um, for that shared revenue. And the intent there is to get the revenue that's generated from that employment as opposed to having a property tax go on existing residents with the understanding that that's probably a more fair tax than just taxing property owners. So. All right, who's next? Okay, yep, you're up. Again, just state your name and address.
I'm, uh, Tim Hendrickson, I live on four four seven seven five Telegraph Road, which otherwise known as one thirteen. I know I'm not as affected as much as everybody right here on Oberlin Road. But as Jeff said, these people who moved out here because they wanted the more country lifestyle living, I grew up in Avon, you said you live in Avon, how long have you lived in Avon for?
Twelve years.
About twelve years? When I grew up, none of that junk was there, and that's why I moved out here, because Avon became a major city. I did not, I have three children, I did not want to raise my kids in that type of setting because I wanted them to enjoy life as how I used to enjoy it. I know you guys are making money and I don't blame you for that. But, uh, another thing about the traffic, when you have one entrance on Oberlin Road and one entrance on fifty-eight, most people think, well, I'm going to avoid the busy way of fifty-eight to get to the shops that you're talking about putting in there. Now what happens when everybody's coming down this road? You have one of the largest apple farms in Ohio. Grove drives tractors down here multiple times a day. When you add that many cars and vehicles from just the housing alone, and then you have other people coming from different areas to come to your, uh, restaurants or whatever, what happens with all that traffic? I mean, or, I mean, there's got to be some kind of plan for all the traffic, because you can't just go off of, okay, well, we have two cars for every home. But you have to add on all the other businesses. And I just wonder, I mean, traffic seems to be a big issue. And what's going to happen, you know, on fifty-eight and one thirteen, those are already busy roads. When you add all these houses and businesses, then what? Well, I mean, I have a hard time getting out of my driveway on one thirteen. I leave pretty early in the morning, but if I'm leaving at like, say, eight o'clock to go somewhere, even on a weekend, it's busy and cars are doing fifty-five or fifty, uh, fifty-five. Well, on one thirteen, it's still fifty. Yeah, it is.
I redo, it depends, Jeff or Tim, where you live, if they did reduce it to forty-five from Oberlin Road.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, on my side-
I live down the street, I was going fifty-five, I didn't even see the sign.
On which side? Of- You live on one thirteen?
Yeah, but then you come out of fifty-eight, they can't-
Yeah, that side, but coming from-
Oh, no, I think you're hung up right.
Yeah, coming from this way is still, and people are flying and there's semis. It's not just, you know, residential traffic, there's semis coming down the road and you have buses. My daughter could be out there waiting for the bus. And you add all these more vehicles and everything, I just, I'm worried about- My daughter could be out there waiting for the bus and you add all these more vehicles and everything, I just, I'm worried about my kids. And everybody else who's not willing to come up here and speak, who might not even know about it because they don't read the paper, they don't do that, I mean, I just, I'm worried about what it's going to do to the township and then later on down the road, well, you have all this traffic, now other people want to sell because they don't like all this traffic, they don't like everything. And then, okay, well, that opens up more opportunity for more developments or, or just look what happened to Avon. That's, that's what I'm saying, I know it doesn't matter, a couple of people and their opinions, you know, but I just wanted to speak my mind on that. I appreciate the time.
Tim, you live, you live east of Oberlin Road on one thirteen then?
Uh, I live, well, now they're building two more houses, I live.
So you're east.
In between the Jehovah Witness House.
Yeah.
And Oberlin Road on the south side.
The one that just put up the mound and the?
No, that's my neighbor, I'm the one right in between.
Okay, I know exactly where you're at then, okay.
Oh, another thing, uh, with being a township, we're still allowed to shoot.
Yeah.
And hunt. Another thing, the wildlife, where's all that wildlife going to go? That's going to create more accidents too, because now you're condensing the deer population to more areas. And then, well, you put all that in, now people are complaining about shooting. Are, are the laws going to change or are we not going to be able to hunt anymore, are we not going to be able to shoot? And I do quite a bit of that, it's a hobby of mine, so I, like, what, what's going to happen with those laws?
Let me address the law, and we've got the prosecutor here, but there's no law changing on the hunting and shooting. But realize within our township and here in Ohio, you have to have a property owner's permission to be hunting on their property. I know where you live. Your property isn't large enough.
I own three acres, I.
I know exactly where you live, um, and, you know, so it's not like there's a lot of hunting there. So going beyond your home is you have to have the property owner's permission. You obviously can't be shooting across, you know, at other homes or across streets or other properties. In terms of the wildlife, I hope that the hunters continue to keep them at the appropriate levels because as, coming from Avon, you're probably aware, I grew up in Westlake when it was all rural, I worked the farms with the migrant workers. I can tell you, there's a lot more deer in Westlake today than there was when I was a kid.
Yeah.
And, um, the thing is because they don't allow them to hunt them anymore. They're not as big as they were when I was a kid, but there are definitely more deer there. There are more complaints about deer and getting rid of them, and you have the residents that are always disagreeing over culling the herd because some don't want it done and some do want it done. But no changes, and Dan, there are no changes in the law, right? That's up to the state.
Sorry about that, yeah, there are no changes that I'm aware of, um, you know, I'm a, I'm a duck hunter, so, so your deer problem is not really my, it's something that I, that I know a lot about, but there's no, this shouldn't anticipate any changes to the hunting regulations. That's what, that gets done by the state, it's not going to be done by the township.
I mean, it may, may not be right now, but down the line, that could.
I can't predict what the state does. I, I, I can't predict what my wife does, it's hard for me to predict what the state's going to do.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks, Tim, um, who's next here? Okay, Mr. Ellis?
Oh, sorry. My name is Bob Ellis, thirty-seven twenty-eight Amherst Avenue in Lorraine. I'm a member of the entities that own this property now. And just purely for the record, I want to state that the owners of the property fully support this development and, uh, indicate that, uh, the developers have been very cooperative with us and in my mind, uh, very cooperative with the members of this community. I was a real estate lawyer for forty-two years, and so I was involved in a lot of developments on both sides sometimes. And, um, I have to admit that Oster and his people, Mr. Evenson, uh, have been much more cooperative with the residents in this township than I've seen in several other types of development. So I just wanted to make that clear as a general, uh, statement with respect to how much they've respected the residents and the needs of the residents and, and responded to their commitments. And they cooperated quite, quite, quite a bit with a lawyer who represented, I think it was nine of the residents. And I think, uh, they exceeded to all, as far as I can recall, all of the, all of the requests that were made within, within reason, of course. But any of it, I just wanted, again, for the record, to state that the owner does fully support this development, thank you.
Okay, anyone else here inside? Okay, Victor, can we get the first person on line? Okay, and coming up will be Jay Bardar, who lives on Oberlin Road. I don't have Jay's address right now, I know where his home is, but hopefully he can give it to us.
Hello?
Hi Jay, you're on.
Okay, yeah, I'd just like to bring up a few points, um, first of all, um, maybe I'm naive or something, but how did the, the township, I did not speak at the first meeting because a lot of the points I was being, that were being raised, were being raised by other people. And I wasn't going to stay there all day to get my chance to say the same points. So how was, how was the, you know, there's this negotiation phase of what the township was doing with, with the developers? So how was it determined who to bring into this negotiation phase? I mean, I'm, I've got property and you can bring it up on the screen if you want, it's right smack dab in the middle of that project. And, uh, I wasn't worth a, a letter or anything, I've had someone or to figure out, you know, that the, the, I understand that the lawsuit was between Oster or the development and, and the, uh, a better one that shows the, uh, the development, please.
Okay, Jay, just for the record, uh, can you give your address there on Oberlin Road?
Seven eight eight seven Oberlin Road. So I'm that big piece there with that arrow pointing at it right there, that's my piece right there. And, you know, I've, I've been living across the street, uh, at the, at seven eight eight seven, it's been a Bardar farm for coming on ninety-eight years now, about approaching a hundred. And I'm wondering, just because I didn't speak at the first meeting, it wasn't worth that the fact that you guys were going into a negotiation phase, me being contacted because I didn't speak up because other people were speaking in, you know, the same things I was saying? I didn't know that was a requirement. Uh, so I was wondering what, what did I miss? And what did the, what does Judge Roth Gary think about that? I mean, I, I, I had, someone broke into my barn, which is across the street here, and stripped the copper out of it, and he was caught by the neighbor. I've got fifteen letters from Oberlin Court. Every, you know, every couple, and I don't know if I'm still going to get more, every couple of months or something, something's going on with that. And there's a letter in my mailbox. I don't, I don't get the Chronicle, I don't, uh, you know, with COVID on and stuff like that, I'm not talking to my neighbors because I, I've visited Mrs. Eric twice. Uh, I see, I talked to, I waved at Jeff across the street, but how was I supposed to, uh, to figure this out? I see where you're protecting the larger, um, property owners to the south by increasing lot sizes. That comes all the way around, stops right at my property and does not encircle my property. I see that you're providing fencing and you're providing mounds that, that go all the way around, stopped at my property and don't, don't include my property. Uh, I see three large drainage ponds surrounding the back acreage of my property that are not, uh, I'm not sure how those are going to drain to each other. Um, and, uh, let's see. I think that's something that, other than the fact that as you encircle my entire property, as, uh, Mr. Conrad, he said, how is, now my property is right in the middle of, what, five, six hundred homes? How am I going to keep that from being the local, uh, paintball course for all the neighbors? That's all I got.
All right, Jeff, if I can paraphrase and just stay on the line, is your first question, you want to understand how the township went through the negotiation process and communication of such?
Correct.
Okay.
I know letters were sent out to the adjoining, adjoining, uh, property owners notifying them that this was a negotiation phase. I didn't, I didn't realize that this was even going on.
Okay, well, let me.
I wasn't, I wasn't.
If, if you let me explain, I'll explain the process and what happened. Is, is the, uh, you were at the Board of Zoning Appeals when this was denied.
I was.
You are aware that, uh, then there was the court case in the Court of Common Pleased and Judge Roth Gary's court.
I learned of that, yes.
And working through this, I, were you, have you been on the public hearing the whole time or did you come in later?
No, I came in, I've been on the whole time.
Okay, and, um, what the trustees did is they realized that if they want this to stay part of Amherst Township, that they're really would be better off for the township as a whole if we went through a negotiation versus continuing to push it through the court because we did fully expect if we took that court case all the way to the wall, we expected to win. We expected Judge Roth Gary, uh, to see things in our favor. There's no guarantee on that when you go to court, but that certainly was our expectation and the feelings of our legal counsel. But we also expected that winning the township as a whole would lose because we all, we know this property is going to develop. It's a matter of how it's going to develop, who's going to develop it, and what community it's going to be in when it develops. So we understood that. We then took every comment that was made at the BCA hearing and all those individuals and what their concerns were, and we itemized those, but, but trustees then decided who was going to be the one person uh, working with the developers and their legal counsel, our legal counsel was Lorraine County Prosecutor's Office. We would go in with our list, call and demands, if you will, and work with what we could get agreement on or at least find each other's no points. And trust me, it's important to find out where the no point is or where the breaking point is where one side or the other wouldn't give. Because this wasn't litigation, uh, this wasn't something that we could communicate openly. But if you've looked on the township's website, uh, since we can no longer get the cable station to broadcast them, we do tape our meetings. And those meetings are published on the township's website and then floated over to our YouTube phase as they get replaced with the most current meeting. Um, so they are always available there. Obviously, the discussion we had in public was, uh, much more cautious than what the trustees would have had in executive session. At each executive session, it was brought back to the full board as to what the developers would agree to, what they wouldn't agree to. And then among the three trustees, they decide, okay, well, what else or what can we push or how do we adjust this? But all of this was always from the standpoint of what's best for the township overall and what can we do for the best outcome for the specific residents that immediately order this particular development since they are the ones that are going to hit the highest impact. We've got in, uh, taking this back and forth, I can tell you, I think we've come to what we felt was the best we could do here for the township overall. And I can tell you that it, the developers were, for the most part, pretty willing in working with us. Obviously, there were things they wouldn't agree to, just as there were things that the township wouldn't agree to. In the midst of this, we had nine individuals, nine families that filed a motion to intervene. Those were actual residents that got their own attorney, uh, Al Schrader representing them. And I can tell you from the trustee's standpoint, we're actually happy that people got their own attorney and filed a motion to intervene. What that did was that opened it up for the township board of trustees to include some of our residents specifically. Ultimately, Judge Roth Gary did not grant the motion to intervene, but the legal consuls all agreed that we could talk. There were nine specific items, um, that the intervenors, I'll call them, brought forward that we could address and include, and those are included in this agreement. Um, there are some things that were always a concern. Our, our biggest concern all along was one property owner, uh, that happened to be Jeff Kalarz. Uh, Jeff was our biggest concern because he's actually got a home there. And what can be done to mitigate things, to put it in the best position for Jeff? Your particular property, which you're right, is surrounded by this. So that's a concern as far as the drainage and whatnot, as far as somebody's actual home where they're living and raising a family, there is no home there. I don't know what your intent is for that property, I know it's farmed.
Well, there is no home, there is no home there now, but I was, I was, uh, if you go back to, um, when I purchased that property, I did actually talk with, uh, your township people and everything about bringing a road in here, oops. Sorry. The, the, uh, bringing a road, uh, making sure that when they split off this one acre lot, uh, for, for, um, that they were selling, that I could get a road in here, come back and place a ho, a house right back in here. And I, you, you can probably even find the sketches and everything that I provoked, that I provided to the, the township. So they didn't do very good, you know, so just because my house wasn't built yet, they're not, uh, I, I lose all my rights, is that what it is?
No, that's not the case. First off, I don't know who you spoke with at the township, but it obviously wasn't me. I'm not aware of any discussion of a road coming back there and putting in homes. But I can tell you, if that is the case and you intend on splitting it into one acre lots, that certainly is right.
Well, when I bought the house original, when I bought the property originally, it was going to be one home that was going to go back in there. But I made sure that there was access, that, you know, the eighty-seven feet and the, the distance and everything like that, that it was still a, a buildable, buildable lot for, for homes back there. And, and, uh, I could probably dig up the sketches I provided.
Okay, well, it's still a buildable lot.
Right, was with, surrounded by everything that you're taking into consideration for the other people who have homes around it and not me.
Well, I know you're looking at the detention basins as a negative around your lot. We actually look at them as a positive because it creates a buffer area there. Um, from you to the other properties, uh, we tried to keep this where there's at least fifty foot buffer. Most of yours is more than fifty feet if you look at it. But, you know, there's no perfect answer for every property owner that adjoins this. So we've done the best that we could.
I got zero answers. I also like to know about, you know, this is a, still a agricultural land that will retain its full use as agricultural land. Um, it has runoff that goes to the north. Uh, and that, that runoff is probably about, there are several places, I would say at least three places where it's running across the fields and dumping into, to this property that's, uh, there. Um, one of them's probably about a third of the way up there. Uh, where is that water going to go?
Is it all surface drainage?
It is, some of it's coming across from the, the other, you know, properties.
Yeah, but my question is.
That, that's one of many.
Surface drainage, Jay, it's not tile that you're referring to?
It is not, there's some small tiles there, but they're, they're significant, not much at all.
Okay, Tom, did you want to address the drainage issue there, we was talking about three spots on his property that drain to the north?
Yeah, I mean, uh, we, we, we as a developer can't impede natural flow, so if it's flowing from south to. So if it's flowing from south to north and it abuts our property at intersections, we have to pick that stormwater up and address it. I mean, I guess it's different if, if the current landowner was to grab all that water and take a pipe and then put it in one location under our property, obviously, that's, that's not legal. So, I mean, within the laws, we have to address that surface.
All right, Jay, was there anything else?
Well, you didn't address the fact that there's going to be about five hundred people around my, with kids that are going to use the back of my property as a paintball course.
Well, yeah, that's, your best thing is if there's someone on your property and it's posted, is to contact the sheriff's office. You know, if you're not there, but, you know, I, I just don't know how to address that. As you're aware, that property in the past, even prior to you moving to the township, was used by quite a few four-wheelers also. And I used to chase them off, particularly after they'd come in, right after the fields were planted.
Yeah, I've had people from down the street on, on my, on my fields also, when there's young beans on them, tearing them up.
Yeah, again, the, the best you can, I can offer there is to contact the sheriff's office. The sheriff's office has come back in this area before. They've also been over at the quarry property in the township. They have their own four-wheeler that helps them to get off-road to catch these people. But that's about the best I can offer because that's an issue that you have today. As far as the others going on your property, I, I mean, you've just got to call the right people. There's, people have property rights and, you know, as far as children, yeah, occasionally children are going to wander. I think we've all done that. I grew up in the field where I grew up, and.
Oh, yeah, that's why I brought it up because I know lots of people that, that the woods down the street was where everyone hung out at.
Okay, was it, was there anything else, Jay? I, I didn't hear you. Was that a no?
No, I just, just to put on the record, they're very disappointed that I, that, you know, that I wasn't even contacted or anything. And I, and I didn't realize that I had to speak at this first meeting to be, to have my, to, to be, you know, it was between the, the lawsuit was between the, the developer and Amherst Township. What's, what's the right word there? Board of Appeals or whatever it is, or?
Yes, the Amherst Township Board of Zoning Appeals.
Right, so I, so I was assuming that the Amherst Township boarding, since I wasn't named in the lawsuit, that they were taking the considerations of my property to heart and not just those that border on the north side and the south side.
Well, you realize there are, there originally were, I think it was twenty-five or thirty homes that were bordering your property to the south side that are no longer there.
Yeah, well, if you look, there was a, a big border there. They were more bordering the direct property to the, to the south of mine. They were not building on the side of the street that ordered my property.
I guess I misunderstood that, but it's still, there's seven hundred.
Can you bring up the map of the original proposal?
There you go.
Right, see this, see that big green area there between my property?
Right.
And three, no, a little south there, right there. That's on my property also, which wasn't being developed, so it's really not helping me out, then moving it back a couple houses. It was more bordering the, the south, the south side of the street there is where most of the houses were.
Okay. All right, is there anything else, Jay?
No, that's all. I've said my piece.
Thank you for participating.
Okay.
Is the other gentleman still on? Okay, I believe.
Hello? I don't know if you can hear me.
Are they on, Victor?
I'm here if you can hear me.
Okay, if you can state your name and where you live.
Paul Major, I live in Hidden Valley, seven thirty-one Trail's End Drive. I have some property on Oberlin Road in the seventy-one hundred block, about fifteen acres, and a few other properties around Amherst Township. I, I have no problem with development. I'm actually all for development, provided it, it, it's properly managed to, you know, responsibly manage all the resources financially and, and naturally. Number one, what I'd like to know is this property, if I recall from the topography maps, it's all very flat. Does this drain to that ditch that goes through Stang Road there? I believe it's called the Baton House Ditch.
Yeah, there's, along Stang Road, the ditch that runs north and south is the Bat House Ditch. And then that dumps into the, there's Angle Ditch and the Bat House Join. And then they continue further going the north and west, where it goes under Middle Ridge there. And then up to Amherst and eventually over to Beaver Creek.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't know why I thought that that was Martin's Run. I've, I've had that property on Oberlin Road for like, wow, I guess it's forty years, time flies. What goes through Baton House Ditch and what you said Beaver Creek, I thought it was Martin's Run. You know, back forty years ago, I had trouble with some flooding in the area where the Lorraine Ashland and Southern crossed Oberlin Road there, which is actually where seven one nine five Oberlin Road is right now. That's a property that I have, and I'm still having trouble with flooding. And forty years ago, it was who, John Zevcheck, Mr. Delafield, Lil, someone or another. They told me after they consulted with the Lorraine County Engineers that it was the fault of the Lorraine, no, not the Lorraine, what was that called? Lake Shore, Michigan and Southern Railroad. That's where those creeks went through to meet Beaver Creek that was undersized from the time it was put in, in the early nineteen hundreds. And nobody ever done anything about that. Now, if you're going to build five, six hundred houses, I can't see with all that pavement and all that rooftop that you're adding, all that earth is going to be unable to percolate any of that rainwater and any of that primary storm water. All it's going to do, no matter how you corral it and release it slowly, is still going to grossly affect that Baton House Ditch. And you're already having trouble with flooding there. I'd like to know what they intend to do to alleviate that flooding. It's simply going to get worse, no matter what any of your studies say. It is just not possible for it to subside otherwise. You're adding to it. You're taking all that rooftop, all that pavement, all those driveways, all those patios, and the ground simply cannot absorb that water. And they're going to have to make some way to make that water drain, including and exceeding retention ponds, because that in itself, that's a hell of a lot. The other thing I'd like to know is with the sanitary sewers, and this would be directed to the engineering department and the prosecutor's office. Everybody in Amherst Township that is connected to that, we'll call it the airport sewer that went down Oberlin Road there, they're paying a sewer management fee of approximately eighty dollars a month. That is a non-millage tax. Will each one of these houses, every party that is connected to that sanitary sewer, be forced or be assessed that same tax? And if so, because it is a tax that goes to the engineers department, the sanitary sewer engineer, will the rest of Amherst Township get a credit? Because eighty dollars a month on top of the sewer fees that Lorraine charges for my houses, I've got one, two, three, four, five houses in the Amherst Township. It accounts for the highest sewage treatment rate in the Great Lakes Basin. So I'd like to know what has been the discussion on those fees for the sanitary engineer, which are indeed a tax.
Okay, well, let's first, you've asked about the drainage going to the Bat House Ditch and the sanitary sewers as far as the fees from the sanitary engineer. So, Mr. Oster, can you address the drainage issue and how that's maintained?
So, stormwater management will be handled, obviously, in the agreement. They've agreed to upsize stormwater management facilities on site. So it'll actually be larger than what's required per the county as the agreement. So there will not be more water leaving the site after development from what happened prior for the, for the current requirements of the county. And obviously, they've agreed to exceed those requirements.
Okay, and Paul, I, I hope you heard that, and this is actually written right into the agreement. We've actually asked the developer to hold back more water in capacity and also have a slower release than what would be required for their development, recognizing some of the flooding that already occurs. And the real issue that we have, if you look along Oberlin Road, you've seen quite a few individual lots put in. They don't have to meet the same requirements in terms of the stormwater management. But each one of those incrementally add to our stormwater issue. So we're actually requesting from the developer that they help resolve some of the problems that are created from some of the other new construction, and also for all individual property owners that decide to put in pools, decks, accessory buildings, barns, whatever other impervious surface they put in place. You know, that there are no checks on, on that stormwater management. I'm certainly not advocating that, and I don't want that to happen. But we are asking them to help alleviate that. There have been areas on Oberlin Road and Stang Road that have been flooded, and the township has been working on that, though it's, it's a long process in getting that handled. We worked through the Lorraine County Stormwater District, which is managed by the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. And the ditch you're talking on Stang Road, we will, if we're successful in our request for additional funding for next year, we will now complete the Angle Ditch area in addition to what the bat, what's turned the Bat House Reach, which is to the northwest. Since the county engineer recommended we start from the north and work our way south, the Bat House Ditch would be next, but realize we can only do pieces of this. And we're trying to work in concert, knowing as people develop their properties, just as we're doing with this one, to hold back more water and have a slower release. In terms of your question on the sanitary sewers, I don't know what eighty dollars a month you're seeing. I live on Oberlin Road. I don't pay that eighty dollars a month. So I don't know if that's an assessment for when you had a tap put in, if you had a new tap put in place, or if you decided instead of paying upfront for your connection from your home to the tap, in addition to abandoning your on-lock system, if you had that put as part of a tax duplicate versus paying it all at once. I, I can't speak to your specific issue, but I can tell you I don't have that. What I do have, and what everyone in this sewer has, and this is the county's, county-owned sewer, is you will be paying about twenty-one dollars a month operation maintenance repair fee to the county sanitary engineer. You typically get that every other month, so it's essentially forty-two dollars. And yes, every one of these new homes will be paying that fee. The reality is the county sanitary engineer knows that these added connections, and I think it was referenced in former county administrator Jim Cordez's letter in support of this, is that they like to see these additional customers because it keeps those costs down and at least not going up. And there was just recently a new sanitary sewer agreement between the county and the city of Lorraine that Lorraine did require the trustees to sign, even though we weren't part of any of the negotiation and, and talking with our legal counsel, there's nothing there to require us to sign it, compel us to sign it, nor do we really have any authority to sign it, but we signed it anyway. And even though we didn't like it, it was better than what we have today. Those of us that currently, you mentioned that this being the largest one, I forget what area. I, I find that hard to believe, but I can tell you they're expensive. It, and it, your cost depends upon your water usage. But this new agreement at least put a cap on it. The current agreement between the county and the city of Lorraine, there is no cap on what the city of Lorraine can charge a resident outside the city of Lorraine. And you all know, if you don't vote for them, they're going to want to charge those outside the city more than they charge inside the city so that you basically are, are helping them keep their rates down for their own residents. And prior to this agreement, which still isn't completely in place as far as I know, hopefully, we'll be seeing it in our bill soon, is I am currently paying a hundred and fifty percent of an in-city rate. So I pay one point five times the amount that a Lorraine resident pays. And I'm sure you've been reading the paper where the city of Lorraine residents are complaining about their rate. We pay one and a half times. This new sewer agreement lowered that, and now it's, it's in writing. So consul can't just willy-nilly decide that when they need more funds in their sanitary fund, increase the rate outside the city without the corresponding increase inside the city. So now we'll only pay thirty, one point three times the rate of an in-city resident by contract between the county and the city. And what's even another portion in the give-take, the county is taking over full responsibility for the pipes and all the lift stations on what you call the airport sewer. That's what Oberlin Road is, and that's what, between the airport sewer, I think it's all called the one oh four now, but we always locally refer to it as the airport sewer and the sewer to nowhere is where this development is going to utilize those particular sanitary sewers. But the county has now taken over the responsibility for that maintenance. And they've also taken over the responsibility for all the maintenance of the pipes and the lift station in the Hidden Valley area to settle a lawsuit there that our Amherst Township residents had actually filed. So now, Hidden Valley area is going to get a little better deal for a while than what we've got along the airport sewer to nowhere. But some of that is because at one time they were paying two hundred percent, so double what the city of Lorraine residents paid. And then they also had to pay an additional maintenance fee to the city of Lorraine. So all of that's going away. So even though we didn't like the agreement, we had no authority to sign the agreement. We signed it because Lorraine thought it was a good idea that we sign it, and they didn't want to have this agreement go through with the county unless we did sign it. And as much as it smelled, it was better than what we have today. So is there anything else, Paul?
Well, no, but I do agree with you, long process to settle your stormwater. I've been waiting forty-one years and I'm still flooded. And that'll make it worse by getting all that watershed into Baton House Creek. Thank you.
Thanks. Victor, is there anybody else online that wishes to speak? Okay, well, all right, Jay Barler's got another question. We'll put him up, and then I don't know if anyone else wished to speak again, because we do still have some time.
Okay, it's just two, two little questions, and it's more along the line of the sewer. It's a fifteen-inch line. Do we know how much percentage-wise, does Chris have that information, that this new development will, is it going to take seventy percent of this sewer line? Is it going to take fifty percent of it? And when the developer down, up, up Oberlin Road, you know, there's a lot of property up. And when the developer down, up Oberlin Road, you know, there's a lot of property up all the way to the airport, that's all agricultural residential, when they go and get developments, and then again, it increases the need, the size of this sewer. I've got a lot of frontage on Oberlin Road. Am I paying by frontage, or are these people, or is it paying by person? And the second thing is that, I don't know if I understood completely, this in no way changes the agricultural use of my property, correct?
What was the second question, Jay?
That this development, putting this PD plan development district surrounding my property in no way limits my agricultural, I'm still on agricultural as if any other agricultural land in the whole township. Is that a correct statement?
Correct.
Okay. So I guess it's the sewer line, then?
Yeah. Have you put a calculation? I don't know if you have, what percent of the capacity you're going to take out of the sewers?
We have not done that yet, Jay. That'll come in the future phases when we start doing the design. We haven't got to the point of figuring out the complete routing.
Hey, was there anything else, Jay? I assume you heard that answer?
I heard it. I heard it. That hasn't been done yet. That's, that's, thank you.
All right, was there anyone else that wished to speak? Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to open it up for the trustees. David?
A couple of questions, Tom. It was alluded to, but I never really answered. How much open space? Do you have any numbers of how much open space is in that proposal?
We're roughly fifty acres. I think we have close to forty acres of wetlands, which will not be impacted. We have retention areas to put in, so approximately fifty plus or minus acres.
All right. And I was curious, how did you get introduced to this property? How did you find out about it?
It was up for sale. Yeah.
You talked?
Signs been on the?
You met at a party? I don't know.
No, signs been on the property forever?
It's been up for sale for many years.
Forty years, hasn't it, Bob? Forty-one years, forty years.
Forty-one years? I think so. I think so. I just got, guess that, I don't, my concern?
And we actually knew the property was for sale for ten or fifteen years or forever, but we historically did not have interest in the property because we were developing in Lorraine and Amherst, and now there's no land left in Amherst. There's really no, we just bought the last couple pieces, the last piece in Lorraine, Amherst Schools. So Lorraine, Amherst, there's no land left in the Amherst School District, so the township, obviously, is the next place. So then, we now have interest and feel it's time.
All right. My next item would be, okay, the settlement doesn't get approved, the court rules against the denial appeal, then how would this property get annexed? Is there a plan to annex this property? Is there a plan to annex the property, or?
Well, we're going one step at a time at this point, so, you know, assuming that, you know, if this gets denied and the courts don't approve it, then we'll figure out the next step at that point, you know, whether we move forward, not move forward, annex it, not annex it. We have any?
That's been my drawback for a long time is, on this, is, I don't, it's been alluded to, annexation's been alluded to, but there's nothing there. I, there's nothing concrete.
Yeah, we developed North Point, which is across the street on Fifty-Eight. That was annexed in the township into the city, so annexation is obviously an option.
My concern is, if I have to add a comment, a constructive comment, it would be to factor in for a possible ingress egress out to State Route One Thirteen, particularly toward that southwest corner where you touch on commercial property. Perhaps if there's commercial development at some point in that area, you may be able to tie an ingress egress into that property to relieve traffic on Oberlin Road.
And we're a thousand twenty-eight feet from our south border to One Thirteen, to the north side of One Thirteen.
Well, wouldn't it be you, it would be probably have the capability to put one in? And in conjunction with something going on, going in on a neighboring property?
John, go ahead.
We do have a stub that stubs into that, that sound problem.
That would probably be what you would do, put in there.
Our entrance, sure.
And you say there's, what, one-hundred-and-fifty acres of ag land?
Roughly.
All right.
There may be more than that. That's what I believe is under the farm lease, one-forty to one-fifty, roughly.
Yeah, because see, that concerns me. That hasn't been brought up, but you look at areas like North Ridgeville, Avon, sixty, seventy years ago, they were primarily agriculture. Now they're either built up or on their way to being completely built out, and that's fifty square miles of agricultural land, not fifty acres, fifty square miles that the county has lost just there in the last fifty years, and that doesn't include surrounding areas. That concerns me. That concerns me in regards to the township, and it concerns me in regards to the state as a whole. You know, I look at the current zoning, the current zoning allows, as is, one-hundred-and-twenty-five units. This goes up to, you know, seven-hundred at some, you know, it's a six-times increase, six-fold increase, Tom. That's traumatic. I'm concerned about the impact on the rural character. I'm concerned about the traffic, the increased urbanization, the extremely high density. You know, even if you factor in the general business that you're wanting to convert to a residential, it's still, it's still, you know, a three, four-time increase in the density. Those are my concerns with this project, and that's what makes this project like a bucket of cold water on you.
Yeah, and my comment to that, I mean, I'm not the one out there making the babies and growing the population, but actually, urban sprawl is a concern. Where you have one-acre lots and two- and three-acre lots, people are sprawling everywhere, which eats up a ton of farmland. The preferred way to do it is to maximize the density, cluster them in certain areas and preserve the farmland. So I think the PDD zoning is a much better way to do that than to just eat up lots and lots of land with one- and two-acre and three-acre zoning. That's my opinion. It's a lot less infrastructure to maintain on behalf of, you know, the township. And we're not six-timing, we're not six, we're not putting in six times the one-hundred-and-twenty-five units. If you recall, we're giving up a hundred acres of the, ninety-eight acres of the general business and moving that to residential as well.
So it would make it about, still, it's three times what you could do with the existing zoning, so.
Right, and we think it's better to have less infrastructure per lot, and instead of just spreading the lots over masses of land, and we think it preserves more farmland by doing it this way.
Well, as far as the township goes, doing a, some kind of a conservation development, at least you get forty percent conserved open space. This, we're getting open space, and most of it's because we've got other uses for it, or we can't develop it. We gotta, we're gonna use it for primarily wetlands and drainage, so. Have a softer impact on the township than going that way than it would be going this way.
Yeah, I mean, we are setting up a park fund to create, you know, over one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, you know, for the parks. That should, you know, have some benefit.
Is that it, David?
Those are my concerns, when I wrote down that I wanted to bring up.
Okay, I'm waiting for a table to come up here, if I can make my comments, Denny, and then you can go.
You can go.
It's, okay, and they will end up scrolling through this as I discuss these items. I know that it's a long night, you've seen a lot of information here, and Tom Oster, the developer, presented this in a PowerPoint presentation, but I like to see things where they're in bullet points or a table, and I think this summary will help people see what the township negotiated with the developer as they went through, and what our mindset was when we're doing this. Again, it all comes back to health, safety, welfare, and the general good of the township overall. So those were the guideposts that we used as we went through this negotiation. Road length for the development, as it was originally proposed, twenty-seven thousand four hundred feet, give or take, that's rounded. The settled preliminary plan that they have here right now is twenty-six thousand feet. That is a thousand feet of less roadway that the township in the long term will have to maintain. In addition to this, in the thirty-acre area, which I'll be addressing later, and this is where it went back and forth, this was originally in that thirty-acre area, apartment buildings. We did get that changed, but the township requested that those roads serving that area in that higher density is the, if we're going to give a higher density, we wanted something back, is we wanted those streets to be private. That's approximately five thousand feet of roadway back there, so just under a mile. The developer did not agree to that, but what they did agree to was that if it becomes age-targeted rentals versus single-family detached or townhomes or cluster homes, that yes, then it will be private streets under the responsibility of the homeowners association versus the taxpayers in the township. Road ownership, the original was that the township owns the roads. The settlement is still that the township owns the roads, but as I said, there's a potential of five thousand feet going to the homeowners association. It just depends what actual construction is done back there. That spline Road is over a mile. It's definitely over six thousand feet as it meanders through right now, and that's when I think you heard it referenced about the developer requesting the ten-year seventy-five percent tax incremental financing from the county. Realize the property taxes will still be paid, but they're going to be diverted to help pay for some of that roadway. And in the township's perspective is that roadway, we want that spline Road to stay the way it is. Tom had mentioned as far as the emergency vehicles traveling through there, so they can quickly get through to service those residents and also get to the other side of Oberlin Road in the southeastern portion of the township. We currently contract with the city of Amherst for fire service, and we are partners with the village of South Amherst and the city of Amherst for emergency medical service, and they actually run out of the city of Amherst in terms of the ambulance. So we want that to stay as blind road, but it's more than just the quick traffic flow for the emergency vehicles. We also think that that will keep the traffic flowing for the people that come from outside this development that are going to use the commercial area. And the last thing we want to see is multiple individual driveways there, because a typical roadway a developer puts in, if they got pavement, they went rooftops along it. Well, every rooftop means a driveway. Every driveway means a potential of an accident, and you not only have the potential of an injury of the individual, it'll loss of their property in the accident, it costs the taxpayers here of Amherst Township just under a thousand dollars for each one that occurs. So we want to try and minimize that, so that's why we want to keep that spline Road in place. The ingress and egress originally, the developer proposed three. The township insisted on two for the same reason. Again, we know where those intersections are, is where most of our motor vehicle accidents happen, particularly when they're on the higher-speed roads, and, you know, again, it's worrying about the safety and the cost there. The one-hundred-and-ninety-three-acre, single-family unit area, when it was originally proposed, was five-hundred-and-thirty-eight homes. It will now only be five-hundred-and-eight homes, with three of those homes being the ones that are fronting on Oberlin Road with a hundred-foot frontage and seven-hundred-foot depth, and they will vary in size from one-point-five-eight acres to two-point-three acres. And I believe it was already mentioned, at least twenty-five-hundred square feet minimum if it's a colonial and two-thousand square feet if it's a ranch. Those are the minimums, maybe larger, but those are the minimums. The thirty-acre area that originally was apartments, Jim, I think this was a concern you brought up at the Board of Zoning Appeals. The developer was proposing six-hundred apartments there up along the Turnpike and near Jim's property, and those were going to be four-story multifamily apartment buildings. That was something that we heard loud and clear at the BZA meeting, which was a concern of people, and the township trustees were concerned with that. So we did get the agreement from the developer to eliminate all those rentals. Again, this is where, in the next item down, they proposed back to us is that, okay, we'll go with the single-family detached townhomes, condos, or an age-targeted senior rental units, and the preliminary plan is showing two-hundred-and-sixty-three units. And again, if that becomes age-targeted, that five thousand feet of roadway will become privately owned and the responsibility of those residents, not the township. Ultimately, what this does in total living units from the original proposal was one-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-eight living units. As the preliminary plan stands right now, it'll be seven-hundred-and-seventy-one units. Now, we expect it's probably going to be less than that, because by changing the layout here is the developers obviously getting to areas that they were showing were more open space originally, and some of those are the wet areas, so they're either going to have to do some wetlands mitigation, or they're going to lose the homes. They're just not going to be able to put the homes there, and some of those may end up being larger lots. But as the preliminary plan stands right now, it went from one-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-eight units to seven-hundred-and-seventy-one units. A lot width, I think it's already been mentioned, around the perimeter where it abuts existing homes. And realize when I say existing homes, Tom went through the size, a lot of these are big homes, big lots, many of them with sixteen-to-seventeen-hundred-foot depth property. So it's not like they're living right on the development, but we still felt it was important that the homes that abut those existing residents be as large as they could. I can tell you that we were pushing, you know, we start with, I want a hundred foot. Well, you obviously got to know. Then you want the ninety foot, and, you know, they came back and, you know, this went back and forth, and we finally did settle on seventy foot with lots. For those of you familiar in the township, is if you go into Hidden Valley, there's some variation there, but the predominance of homes there is seventy-five-foot width lots. So that'll give you a feel for the lot width. That seventy-foot frontage will be at the building setbacks for those homes that abut the existing properties on Oberlin Road and Telegraph Road. They will also have a minimum, if it's a colonial, twenty-three-hundred square feet and then eighteen-hundred square feet minimum. The rest of the lots in there will be the fifty-foot frontage lots. Perimeter buffer, and this kept varying. I don't know if some of it was whoever was doing the CAD drawings, if it was deliberate mistakes or whatever, but that kept, those lines wavered. At one time, it was less than twenty feet. Zoning had called for a minimum of twenty-five. We actually have a fifty-foot perimeter buffer for all those homes abutting the existing homes on Telegraph Road and Oberlin Road properties, and that's an addition. It'll have the landscaping there and potential mounding. I think at Jim's, you may prefer the fencing up there, which you have brought up at the BZA hearing. The walking and biking trail, that was shown at the BZA hearing. Realize this was something that the township had asked for. When the developer presented an informal presentation, we said, boy, you've got a lot of hurdles to get over, but we strongly recommend they work with the metro parks, because the township had obtained some grant funds from the WAC at one time to do what they call a Transportation for Liveable Communities Initiative, and as part of that, in addition to some zoning, we are looking at a multipurpose trail that would run along- that would run along the Lake Shore Railway down to Wellington in conjunction with the Lake Shore Railway and the Metro Parks. Well, the one that was presented to the BZA had an eight-foot wide gravel walking trail, and we said, no, we want a paved walking trail. And that trail sometimes, and again, it could have been just the CAD operator changing things, but it had been down to six-foot wide, and said, hey, what happened? We want eight-foot paved. Developers agreed to that. There was no trailhead in the original plan. We said, it's important, you can't have a trail to nowhere, just as a sewer to nowhere, because then the only people using it are the people that live in the development. So the developer did agree with this, they did talk with the Metro Parks, and there now will be a property set aside for a trailhead there so that people can come in from outside. And I know some of you don't want people coming in from the outside, but the fact of the matter is, is people are going to come, and this is going to be a nice area. And I like to bike and walk, and there is no safe place for me to bike and walk on Overland Road, so we tend to drive somewhere else to go and bike and walk. The walking, biking, and trail ownership. Originally, once this was agreed to be put in, it was going to be the responsibility of the homeowners' association. The township argued, no, we want this to be the Metro Parks. And you may say, well, geez, that seems backwards, because, you know, we're putting that on the taxpayers. Well, the taxpayers really support the Metro Parks. We know the Metro Parks will do a good job of taking care of this trail. Homeowners' associations, you never know, if anyone's been part of a homeowners' association, I think you can imagine the discussions you get in there and a job that nobody really wants. But we're more confident with the Metro Parks taking care of this. That also makes the difficulty for, some of you might want to go into this development, maybe not to live there, but to go and participate in the commercial areas or use that trail. Well, guess what? If it's under the ownership of a homeowners' association, they want to know, why are you coming into my area and using my trail that I pay for? By being the Metro Parks, now we all get that, that trail's available to all of us, and particularly if we get it tied in in the Lake Shore Railway going down to the south. And I might be speaking out of turn here, but I'm going to tell you, I was talking with Jim Zemanek, the executive director for the Metro Parks just Thursday, and if this goes, the Metro Parks is even considering adjusting their plan, where their plan was to start from Wellington and work north, is they may adjust things now and come from the north and work south. And, because realize, same thing, they can't do it all at once, they've got to manage the funds that they have available. And I'm certainly going to encourage him to start that way for the particular trail. Roundabouts, I don't, I think Tom touched on the design, or it might have been John, someone touched on the design. That was kind of open in the original. It was, or rather, indeterminate. It still shows several. Now, the agreement says two minimum. We actually would prefer some more, particularly in the business hub. And you say, well, why the roundabouts as opposed to traffic lights? Again, it's about the safety issue and the cost issue here, in addition to keeping traffic moving. So we don't have to pay for traffic lights, we don't have the maintenance on traffic lights, we don't have the incidents there with traffic lights. You do slow down when there's a roundabout, and everybody's talked about traffic and speed. I guarantee you, if we had roundabouts along Overland Road, people wouldn't travel that fast. It's a force, it's like a smooth speed bump. So we are going to have the roundabouts in there again to calm the traffic, but still allow the smooth flow and to reduce the opportunities and the cost and the damage that can occur from the motor vehicle accidents. You heard the discussion about the Joint Economic Development District, that was kind of open and inferred before, now it's committed and writing. Because they have a Joint Economic Development District, you need the property owners to agree to it. Right now, there's no business owners in there. Now's the time, we've got the developer interested, we've got an existing property owner, if they sign on and agree to this, then the trustees have to decide which municipality they're going to work with. We currently have judds with the City of Amherst and the City of Lorraine, so there would have to be public hearings on that, and there'll be some discussions with them. Stormwater management, which has been brought up by multiple individuals, they had in the original proposal, obviously there are requirements they have to meet. Those requirements tend to be, don't shed any more water in the future than is being shed now. Well, I think we've heard from several individuals here, I mean, we heard from Jay Barter, we heard from Jeff Palarch, we heard from Paul Major, I don't know Paul, all of them talking about the flooding and stormwater. This is one that the township pushed, also the intervenors pushed, is that we don't want just the minimum, we want you to exceed that amount. We were trying to tie it down to a percentage and release rate, but that was kind of difficult because the developer's saying, well, we don't know how much we're going to be building because you haven't agreed to that yet. So what it came down to was, they will do more than the minimum, that's obviously going to have some more give and take in the future, but again, that's to avoid the flooding and associated costs that occur today, but it's both, not just within the development, which is what the county engineer will look at, it's also outside the development. Stormwater aeration, I think that was mentioned, there will be several of these detention areas will be wet, meaning they will have water in them. It wasn't determined what was going to happen in the original proposal, that will be required. That was also a request from the intervenors. Their concern was water stagnation and the great increase in mosquitoes that can happen when water stagnates. So the agreement was, yes, that for the wet areas, there will be aeration to keep that water moving and keep the mosquito population down. The stormwater management process ownership, I know somebody, I think Colin, you might have brought that up. It was indetermined, not determined before, though it was probably inferred, that will definitely be the homeowners' association, but it will have oversight from the county engineer and also in the planning from Lorraine County Soil and Water Conservation District. And there will, I'm sure there's going to be inspection points during the development timeframe over this 10 years that they're estimating right now, there will also be the ongoing oversight of all of that stormwater detention and maintenance. So the homeowners will have the cost burden, but the county will give oversight over that to make sure that it happens and doesn't get forgotten. Filtile drainage disturbance, I know Jay brought that up for three points where his are actual, that's why I asked, surface or underground, his are surface. I don't know who, particularly in the intervenors, brought it up, but it was one concern they had. And so the agreement was, if a storm tile gets disrupted, realize this is tile that's somebody's using, that's not on their property, but it's draining their property. Well, you don't want to cause them a burden because you've just dug it up and plugged it up or ripped it out. The developer has agreed, they'll either restore it or do some alternative to handle that water, and I think it was John Evison, it might have been their engineer, that mentioned they may have to direct it to the detention basins, but it's in the agreement, it's in There was a question, this was also from the intervenors, and I think Colin may have brought this one up about, will there be charges for storm and sanitary sewers on existing residents? And that wasn't addressed in the original, but the settlement agreement specifically puts that in writing with the commitment not to pass any of these improvement costs onto existing residents. Screening on Overland Road at the entryway, that was not addressed in the original development plan. I know Jeff Palarch brought this up, but realize that normally comes up in a final development plan that goes before the Township Zoning Commission, but to get that noted upfront is that is in the settlement agreement in writing, that was, that one again, and several of these others. The township was already working on that, but that was brought up by the intervenors, so to mitigate the headlight impact on existing residents. And that's not only at the turn lane, but that's also going across, and also if there's little wiggle room as far as the exact location on that spline Road. The Park and Recreation Fund, that's another issue here. We know people coming in here, there's going to be children, we know they're going to want to play soccer and baseball and football and, you know, all the other things that go on. You don't see a park here, obviously they're going to use the Amherst Township Park, there's the school parks, the City of Amherst parks, you name it, there's parks out there. Well, it costs money to run a park, it's not free. And so in this particular one, and this wasn't a requirement, but it was approached, hey, you know, you're putting a burden here, how can you mediate that? And the developer offered the $250 for single-family home, $100 for each unit in the 30-acre area, that will significantly help here, even though you've got a trail, a multipurpose trail going through the development and a trailhead for recreation. This is in addition to helping the other recreational areas and demands here in the The TIP was mentioned, the tax incremental financing to pay for the approximate $5 million roadway for the spline Road, that was in the original proposal. Realize the township hadn't agreed to that, we don't really get a say, that's the county can do that. That is in the final proposal also, though, but here, we've got it written that the township participate in that and that that spline Road not be changed, because again, the concern over the safety issue and also the movement of traffic. You know, that spline Road, we prefer that, we do not want to see homes along that particular road. But I think that's addressed most of the items now, but the overall here is economic impact. You know, it's, I know it was pointed out that the only thing this board sees is dollar signs, and that is not true. But let's face it, it's a reality. We have to look at anything that comes in here that is not going to put the burden on the existing residents. And that was part of, the township paid for a consultant at one time, when we went through the Route 58 corridor study and including portion of State Route 115, trying to do the zoning here that would do just that, bring into the development, that takes the burden off of the existing residential owners and try and do some shift over to the commercial properties. This gives us that opportunity to do that. And I know the developer's pushback always was, the intensity of the commercial depends upon the number of rooftops. Well, obviously, that's a give and take back and forth. I'm much more comfortable with what we've come up with than what we had. I'm definitely more comfortable that the township makes the decision versus one of our neighboring municipalities making the decision. So the trustees, they recognize this, it was not strictly dollar signs, but we know it's going to develop, why not keep it in the township? And why not do it what's best for the township and the township's residents? So that was a decision-making that was put in place as we went through this, and trust me, there were many hours, many back and forths, many attorneys involved in this as we went through. And I realize I intended before I started going through this, that's where I'm done talking about the specific development, but so that I don't forget, because I know a lot of you are going to be diving out of here quick as the trustees go back to their regular meeting. But I want to make sure, I thank Victor Edwards, he's with Technology Systems Integration, that's the consultant the township worked with to upgrade our technology so that during the COVID environment, we could actually still communicate with people when there's large groups without forcing them to actually have to come to a meeting. I'm not sure what the final number was virtually, I know there were 11 people when we started here, you heard from, I think it was two of them, there might have been three of them there, but it obviously, there's a total of 16, he just told me. And that was paid with CARES Act dollars, just so you're aware. It also helped us in terms of getting the meetings taped and put onto the website so that people could see it, though those weren't live, we decided not to do them live. We've got multiple township employees. Now, realize when I say township employees, we don't have a big staff, they're only two full-time. Most of these people are part-timers, and you may as well say volunteers. They'll come to a meeting like this, and they got a big raise this year, it went from $30 a meeting to $35. And I realize that's not just the meeting, it's all the preparation they got to do before that, so. And I hope I don't miss anybody, but we've got Rose Betscher from our Board of Zoning Appeals, Colin Cernay, who's an alternate on our zoning commission, George Anne, my wife, she's back in the tech room, Eddie Gonzalez, our road guy, he may have already left, Kevin Smarsh, our road superintendent, Linda Ashley, our township administrator, Lonnie Dillon, who's with our zoning commission. The prosecutor's office is obviously here for any type of legal advice, and that's Dan Petticourt, and Tom Mangin sitting over here, and a gentleman that's near to our heart and very helpful is Jerry Innis sitting back, I think that's a blue mask that he's wearing. Jerry's retired now from the prosecutor's office, but, you know, this has been going on since December of 2019. So there's been a lot of meetings and questions of Jerry as far as what can we do, what can't we do. I definitely want to thank the intervenors, because, you know, some people, when somebody's trying to get part of a lawsuit, they think of that as bad. I can't tell you how happy we were to get that, because it now gave us an official communication channel we could use in the midst of litigation that normally, I'm sure you guys read in the paper all the time, I can't comment, it's in litigation. Well, guess what? By them joining in, they became your spokesperson. Whether they talk to someone else is up to them. We followed what our legal counsel tells us we can and can't do. You know, I assume they follow their legal counsel's recommendation too, but it helped having them there. And really thank all of you that have put up with a very long meeting and participating here and all those that were on virtually. And also, I think I mentioned Kevin, but I forgot, Remy Saron, our zoning inspector, he may be gone or in the back. Realize that we had planned as if this was going to be a much larger group, because there were well over 100 people at the last meeting. We had no idea who was going to come in, who's going to be online, what the amount of interest is. So you might have noticed, the road guys cleaned up the garage area, and they had another group of chairs back there. We set up to potentially handle 70 people inside. We purchased the license for the software, we could go above 100 online. We knew we wouldn't get there, but we didn't want to take the free cheapo because it only gave us 25. So again, thank you for participating. With that, Denny, did you have anything to say?
No, I have nothing to say.
Okay. So if there's nothing else, what's going to happen, just so you understand, the trustees are going to make a motion to go back to their regular meeting. It's at that point, we will pass a resolution, either in support or oppose to this settlement agreement. I expect it's going to be approved. I don't know if it'll be unanimous, but I expect it'll be approved. This doesn't stop here, though. This is approving the settlement agreement and preliminary development plan. The developers still have a long way to go, they're going to have to go through a final development plan. Our zoning inspector, and I fully expect he will, will be working with the, our township architect, county planning, the county engineer for stormwater, there'll be Lorraine Soil and Water Conservation District, and then the sanitary sewer engineer who reports to the Board of Commissioners. And they will appear, those people will give their input, it'll also come to the zoning commission, and then the final decision on whatever the final development plan is and the phasing of that will be up to this Board of Trustees. Or potentially, on timing, it could be a different Board of Trustees, you know, so it's, but that's just the way the process would work. So this is one last time, any comment from anybody? Okay, well, with that, I'm going to make a motion that we end the public hearing and return to regular session.
A second.
Roll call, Chris?
Mitch?
Yes?
Abraham?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and just so, because the trustees have some other business, but I know everyone wants to hear what's going on here. This is an Amherst Township Resolution regarding authorization to enter into the attached settlement agreement. settlement agreement with Amherst Consolidated Properties LLC, Consolidated Investors Group LLC, and Consolidated Investors Group II LLC, and Lorain County Common Police Court Case Number 20CV200199 pursuant to Revised Code Section 505.07. And I'm going to make this motion, I'm not going to read through all the whereas's, they were all covered in the opening to the public hearing. If you want to hear them again, I'd suggest you go to the township's website or YouTube channel and watch it. So I'm just going to go down to, now therefore be it resolved by the trustees of the Township of Amherst, State of Ohio, Section 1. The Board of Trustees finds and determines that it is in the best interest of the township to sign the attached settlement agreement by and between the Amherst Township Board of Trustees, Amherst Consolidated Properties LLC, Consolidated Investors Group LLC, and Consolidated Investors Group II LLC for the Sandstone Plan Development District and Preliminary Development Plan settling Lorain County Common Police Court Case Number 20CV200199 pursuant to Revised Code Section 505.07. Section 2, the Board of Trustees, the President Chairman, is authorized to sign the attached agreement. The rest is all just boilerplate that we've done this in an open and public hearing, so that'll be my motion.
And I will second that resolution.
All right, thanks, Danny. And before we go through roll call, I did forget one other point in the process. The developer still has to post this settlement, go back to Judge Rock Gary's court, so it'll be publicly posted. If you want to go to the Court of Common Pleas, you can do that and say your piece there Unless they're just virtual, I don't, I'm not sure what the court's doing right now and how long this will take. They may be strictly virtual, but I'm sure if you check on it, if that's the case, they'll let you know. Is there any other comment?
Nothing.
Okay, Chris, roll call?
Lynch?
Yes?
Abraham?
Yes.
Euring?
No.
And the motion or the resolution number, Chris?
It's 2621.
Okay, at this point, you're all welcome to stay, but we're just going to, there are some things the township has to take care of, predominantly financial here, but you're welcome to go too, and we'll give you a few minutes to clear out, and then we'll finish up.
Thank you for coming, all of you. I really appreciate your attention.
Okay, now that the public's cleared out, we do have several other items of business. We're going to start. Chris, you want to read the minutes of the prior meeting, please?
Sure. The February 9th, Amherst Township meeting minutes. The meeting was called to order at 7:03 PM by Chairman Lynch with pledge to the flag. Roll call, Abraham Lynch, Euring and Kish present. Also in attendance are Serone, K Smarsh, L Ashley, G Lynch and C Cerny. 2121, a motion by Abraham, seconded by Euring to approve the minutes of the January 26, 2021 regular meeting is read, all ayes. 2221, a motion by Lynch, seconded by Euring. Amendment of the 2021 Temporary Budget of Resources and Appropriations due to receipt of Lorain County Stormwater District Funds for Angle Ditch Restoration Phase 2 Project, all ayes. 2321, a motion by Lynch, seconded by Abraham, move to approve the bills and financial reports with reservations, all ayes. No correspondence, no audience matters under reports, none for the ambulance, none for the sheriff. Under zoning, one permit for the month, a BCA has scheduled an area variance for February 25th, 2021 at 7:00 PM regarding an above-ground pool. Road Park and Cemetery, dealing with a lot of snow, ice and road maintenance. Cleaned out ditches prior to the last storm, doing regular maintenance on vehicles. NOPEC grant has been submitted for our LED lights installation. $1,500 community grant sponsorship paperwork is being completed for submission. The lease for the rental property next year for 2021 has been signed. Complaints are being handled by the designated individual. Under old business, Lorain County Solid Waste Policy Committee met today, still going to hold Pride Day the third Saturday in May. Host community agreement with Solid Waste District and Republic is being negotiated for a five-year contract. The next meeting is scheduled for April. Trustee Euring noted the reduction of the quarterly administrative fee from 99 cents to 60 cents was approved by the Lorain County Solid Waste and Recycle LeBol Consortium. Under new business regarding the public hearing for a proposed settlement agreement between the Board of Trustees of Amherst Township and Amherst Consolidated Properties LLC and Lorain County Common Police Court, Case Number 20CV200199. It will be held February 23rd, 2021 here at the Township Hall, using the garage for overflow, following all CDC protocols for COVID safety. There will be Zoom capabilities. Trustee Lynch presented an agenda, timeline and cost to facilitate the public meeting. Is also asking township staff to be available for a test run prior to as well as the night of the meeting. The next regularly scheduled meeting will be held Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021 at 7:00 PM at the Amherst Township Hall. A public hearing will be called during the regularly scheduled meeting on February 23rd, 2021. A work session may be scheduled for this Thursday, February 11th, 2021 at 7:00 AM. 2421, a motion by Abraham, seconded by Euring to adjourn at 7:45 PM. Roll call, all ayes.
Yeah, are there any changes or corrections to the February 9th meeting minutes?
No, I have none.
Okay, then can I have a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
Euring?
Yes.
Abraham?
Yes.
Lynch? Then in your packets, you had the January 2021 credit card accounts transaction detail, and I believe you've all signed that.
And I'll make a motion that the credit card account transaction detail has been reviewed per policy. The card statement is accepted as presented, subject to investigation.
I'll second the motion.
Lynch?
Yes.
Abraham?
Yes.
Euring?
Yes.
And then your financials, you've got your payment listing in front of you, nothing out of the ordinary compass minerals, that was, I believe, our second delivery of salt. And our year-to-date revenue is $122,219.19. Our year-to-date expenditures are $158,745.73. And we did receive the reimbursement check from Amherst, I just got that in today's mail.
And Chris, if you think about it, I'm hoping we get the first half property tax in before the end of March, but there's no guarantee on that because it'd be nice to have that information before we pass a full permanent budget. Right now, we're operating under the temporary budget.
Right.
And, you know, that's our largest revenue source, so it's kind of hard to pass a budget when we aren't sure exactly what's coming in.
Right, well, hopefully, it'll be in, April 9th is when the permanent has to be in. So, it would have to be the, well, yeah.
We want to go for the March meeting.
It would have to be the 23rd meeting. So hopefully, we have it.
Okay. If not, we're just going to have to pass one and then maybe do some amendments later. Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, well, I'll make a motion then to pay the bills and approve the financial reports with reservation.
Second. Who seconded?
He seconded.
Okay.
Lynch?
Yes.
Euring?
Yes.
Abraham?
Yes.
And that is all I have.
Okay, no correspondence?
No correspondence.
Any correspondence, David?
I have nothing to bring forward at this time.
Hey, Denny?
Not that you...
And Remi, you're still here, but nothing you have to report on zoning, then?
Oh, just had your four permits and we got one new house.
Where's the new house?
On Toll Road.
Okay, I know the one where they just dug the basement, or the one next to it? The one to the west?
The one on the left, turning to the west, yes.
Okay, so they haven't dug it yet, I know which one you're talking about. Know who our new resident's going to be.
Do you know?
Yeah, he actually grew up over there.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so he's just moving right down from where he grew up. Okay, under new business, there's also, Administrator Ashley brought to my attention that our Resolution 11721 to NOPEC for the Energized Community Grants, and this is the one we're going to use for converting to the LED lights. We specify the current grant agreement as the one we signed January 28, 2018. They requested that we reference the 2020 agreement. So I'm going to make a motion that we reconsider Resolution Number 11721 and change the reference grant agreement to the 2020 agreement with NOPEC. That'll be my motion.
I'll second it.
Roll call when you're ready, Chris.
Lynch?
Yes.
Abraham?
Yes.
Euring?
Yes.
And that number is? Thank you. And just Linda, for, for your information, you can take this electronic one, you know, put in the 210 and the 2020 agreement on there, and then submit that to NOPEC.
You all set, Linda?
Also, we've got the next stormwater grant application is due March 31st. Pete Zawick did call me and discuss this, I'm not sure the, and he also, for, one of the property owners there that he needed contact, make contact with, I know Kevin Smarsh, our road superintendent, got that information to Pete. I don't know, Denny, if Pete said he was going to meet with you, if that was on the next grant, or if he talking the, putting together the bid package for the grant we've already been awarded.
That's what we were, we met.
Okay.
And that's what we did.
Well, then we still have to, and Pete's aware of it, and he said he would get the estimate, but I'm going to contact him again. It's like we can't turn on a dime.
You've got to stay on him.
Yes, but it will be a smaller piece finishing up on the angle ditch, which I thought we were pretty much done with, but he's recommending we finish that, and I know Kevin's already given him the contact information with the one property owner there, because he needed an easier way to gain access for that restoration. But I'll follow up with Pete again on that. He seemed more concerned with getting the documents together to go out for bid for the existing one, and I understand that, but I explained to him, Pete, our immediate deadline that's right in front of us is a new grant application, you know, and this is the old cartoon that you used to see put up, you shoot the closest alligator first. And that's the closest alligator to us right now. Okay, our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, March 9th. I don't think there'll be a need for a work session until I hear back from Pete between now and our next meeting, but if there is, I'll call you guys on short notice. Is there any other business?
I have none.
Okay, I assume there's no need for an executive session?
No.
Then can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Abraham?
Yes.
Euring?
Yes.
Lynch?